Good evening and welcome. I will call to order the July 1st, 2025 Yakima City Council Meeting. We'll start with the roll call, please.
Berg.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Byers.
Present.
DeCio.
Here.
Glenn.
Present.
Herrera.
Here.
Roy.
Here.
All right, that means all seven here. Thank you very much. Please stand and join us for the pleasure of allegiance.
Begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please. Thank you. Next is Interpretation Services.
Jorge, yes, your language connection. If somebody needs interpreting services, I have their radios. Tengo los radios disponibles y estoy dispuesto a hacerlo. Gracias.
Gracias. All right. Now we enter into public comment. There will be 35 minutes allowed for public comment this evening. If you want to make a comment, please let us slip in the lobby and bring it to the city clerk. You'll have two and a half minutes, and when you come to the podium, please give us your name and the city in which you live. Also, state law prohibits electioneering at city facilities. During public comment, speakers cannot campaign for or against candidates or support or oppose any ballot measure in the upcoming election. All right, we'll get started. The first person is Tony Sandoval.
Tony Sandoval, City of Yakima Steel. I wrote this down, hopefully I stayed within two and a half minutes. I want to start by saying that I respect the chief YPD administration, especially the YPD rank and file who put their lives on a daily basis. I was at a public meeting of the Health District on June 25th and experienced what I consider the disturbing meeting. A person at the Health District mentioned that YPD was giving out citation to pop-up vendors selling food. I've never seen that in the whole time I've ever lived here. Somebody told me that our YPD is not giving out citation for not having a health permit. That's not YPD's job, that's the Health Department. The committee would like the YPD to put the hours working to fight crime, and the knuckleheads are driving recklessly, as we're seeing in the news, wreck after wreck after wreck. I've been getting calls, that's why I'm up here. I'm a product of a farmworker family, and we didn't go to the Texas Roadhouse for lunch. We ate right there at the orchard. If you go to a French restaurant, Italian restaurant, Chinese restaurant, who's cooking? Mexicans. Trust me, the food is safe to eat, and just because maybe they didn't get a permit or something, the Health District needs to go out there and educate them so they can get a health permit, not having a citation on them. I hope I'm wrong. As a fiscal conservative who's focusing on out-of-hand killings that are happening, Pleasant Avenue, that's two blocks from my house, it's still happening. I don't want our PD doing the job of the Health District.
Thank you, Mr. Sandoval. Next is Nicole Perez, or Berg, excuse me, Nicole Berg.
Good evening. I am Nicole Berg. I am a concerned citizen of Yakima, and I wanted to speak regarding the proposed levy. As we are aware, there have already been taxes increased at the state level, at the county level, and now our city council is suggesting to increase property taxes at the city level as well. Just to get a break, not do anything extra, just to break even. So this doesn't support any programs, this does not enhance Yakima in any way, simply to get out of the $9 million of debt that Yakima has accumulated from previous city council members. And it is their irresponsible spending and their lack of budgeting that should not have to fawn on us citizens of Yakima. Yakima already has issues with homelessness, it already has issues with lack of healthcare providers. If this levy were to be passed, this would deter people from healthcare, from considering Yakima as their home, as well as increase rent for those who are already struggling to pay their rent. As we know, landlords of those properties would not eat the cost. They would increase the rent for those citizens or those tenants and force even more people to become homeless. I really do hope you consider that when you're considering this levy. And my ask is that if this proposed levy does go to the citizen vote, for the language to be used at a level that is understandable by everyone to avoid confusion, so that people understand what they are voting for, whether it's for or against. If you guys are saying that you want to be transparent, this is one way that that can happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Berg. Next is James Parks.
James Parks, District 1. First of all, I want to give you guys some kudos. The pool got it done, you know, took a while, we did. Capital improvements on the major roads, you're working on it, okay? Trolley, let's get rid of the trolley. Okay, that's just my deal. If we can't fix the tracks, let's get rid of it, okay? If we're going to keep it, then that causeway running to Seela, you know, might do us some tours or something. I want to thank YPD, I want to thank the chief for being visible, being highly visible. You guys know that the chief has started a program with young kids, a police, a youth and police engagement piece. Did you guys know that? We need to be checking it out, and it's working, okay? It's working. Don't think about taking them officers off the streets. They're doing the work, I can see it, especially in District 1 where I live, I see a total difference. YPD has ran out a couple of drug houses over there, and I see them working on those gangs. If you cut the police force, then I don't know where you guys are going to be. So I think, hey, I appreciate what you guys are doing, and if you weren't doing what you're supposed to be doing, I would say so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you.
Next is David Elifson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm a member of the city council, thank you. I'm David Elifson, I'm a resident of the city, I was born and raised here, practiced law for 24 years, and for the last 14 years of my career, I was a judge with Yakima County Superior Court. After my retirement in 2023, I began to volunteer with the Yakima Police Department, and well, and continued my efforts in addressing the fentanyl problems that are plaguing Yakima. As a judge, I had an opportunity on a regular basis to observe the finished work product of law enforcement, and I was always impressed. Since I've become a volunteer with the Police Department and have the opportunity to see their work firsthand and how they put cases together, I can tell you that they are passionate about what they do, they are committed to the citizens of Yakima, and they are professional. Should be very proud of them. I'm here because I'm concerned about the budget deficit that's been described in the media. There are two ways, as I see it, to address a deficit. One is you cut expenses or you raise revenue. Yakima has been cutting and cutting, kicking the can down the road for years. It's time to make a difference, a change. I believe that raising revenue, investing in our future is critical. I've talked to a number of members of our medical community who said, how do we recruit doctors to Yakima? We've all seen the diminishment of medical care in Yakima. How do we recruit doctors when we're proposing cuts to law enforcement, cuts to fire, closing pools, damage to the Harmon Center? These are not tools that are going to make Yakima vital and attractive. You are the stewards of Yakima's future, and I would urge you to invest in our future as soon as you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Elifson. It's good to see you. Next is Tony Corsi.
Tony Corsi. Mr. President, I understand this. I was informed that there was someone that was at my property from PPNL. You guys know that story, so am I going to have to repeat myself five times? I made a phone call here in Yakima to our city manager. I have yet to have a conversation, which they're worried about, the people, is if I'm going to sue the hell out of Yakima. You guys abused me, you guys mentally, and you sit there and lie. And I'm telling the truth, that's the sad thing, all the way through, years. That is really shameful. And you guys had me go to Eastern, and they couldn't even handle that, because they messed up on that deal too. And you guys voted for to look at Seela plans. If a developer came into town, you guys look at the plans, and if he looked into Seela, Seela comes over to Yakima, or Yakima goes over there, and you look at the plans. So you're joint private-public partnership, understand that? So, and I did sign, you know. God bless, we hear you say.
Thank you, Mr. Corsi. Next is John Gorman.
Hi, everyone. John Gorman, a resident of Yakima. Now, thanks for the two and a half minutes, by the way, my wife usually doesn't give me that much. Anyway, your council's budget decisions have a profound impact on public safety, and cutting the police budget could lead to longer response times and weaker crime prevention, putting our community at risk. I served the Yakima Police Department and the City of Yakima, fully commissioned reserve officer for 22 years. I remember when Frank Baursocks had black hair. I asked the distinguished board, I have one question, I'd like you to, just raise your hands, I would like to know, how many of you have toured the Yakima Police Department and the jail? The reason I'm asking is because those who haven't, on a day-to-day basis, it serves, and they see these challenges that come up, and they serve these challenges every single day, and it's not fun, ever. And people are in crisis, people are absolutely concerned about their well-being, and if you shortchange YPD, you'll shortchange every person in Yakima. I'd like to explore solutions for reallocating funds or finding new revenue streams to maintain essential police services. Public safety should remain a top priority. That's all I'm asking. Please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Next is Ryan Gleek.
Good evening, council. I know you're not used to seeing me in this portion of the agenda.
Not dressed so casually.
Of course, yes, I know, dressed so casually. Of course, tonight, I'm speaking on my own behalf as a private citizen, but I did want to, as you approach the finish line of this long, long budgeting process, and you approach the time to make decisions, I wanted to give my two cents as somebody who's present, and hopefully future is very much tied to the City of Yakima. As an employee, I frequently get questions from friends who live in the city, asking about the budget and potential tax increases, and these are the points that I make to them. What brings us here today is not problems with budgeting or fiscal irresponsibility, what brings us here today is that in 2001, the residents of the State of Washington voted themselves an annual perpetual tax cut in real dollars, meaning adjusted for inflation. So we are, as you all know, we can only raise our tax base, our tax, property tax base by 1% per year. Over the last 24 years, the annual average inflation rate has been 2.5%, meaning the cumulative inflation over 24 years is 82%. What cost a dollar in 2001 now costs a dollar 82. Meanwhile, our cumulative increase in our property taxes is 27%. And to add a little further context, the median household income in Yakima County in 2000, I couldn't find 2001, in 2000 was $33,633, and in 2023, the median household income is $67,633, so just over double. So though it may not feel like our incomes have kept up with inflation, they actually have. And so I want to go to this point that I've heard expressed multiple times, that, hey, the city needs to make significant cuts, people out there have to make significant cuts, and the city should. But the answer is, we have, it's just that it's been slowly over 24 years. So going back to that 82% inflation number and that 27 number, 27 is roughly 1/3 of that 82, so that 82% increase in costs has been matched by only 1/3, only 1/3 of that has been covered by an increase in revenue. So it's not an issue of irresponsible spending, it's simply an issue of not enough revenue. And I know I'm getting to the end of my time. I do urge the council, please, put it to the voters, this is such a big, big, big question of whether we should increase revenue or make cuts, put it to the voters.
Mr. Gleek, your time is done.
Yes, support one big beautiful levy.
Thank you. Then next is Patty Maggard Prettoletto? I'm sorry, I got your last name on.
You'll worry it someday.
Thank you. I keep trying.
I'll keep coming. Patty Maggard Prettoletto, and I am in District 6, represented by Matt Brown, who is not here today.
He's here by Zoom.
I'm right behind you.
Hello. So you've met me a few times now, as I fight for Parks and Rec, and I not only am a patron of Lions, I'm a patron of Franklin, the golf course, the Harmon Senior Center, and I'm in the neighborhood of Station 92, which is also on the chopping block. So therefore, your budget shortfalls have a direct impact on me and my life and my neighbors. So as I brought up to you before, I think it's vital to the health and well-being of the people of Yakima that we keep these services, and especially to you, Mr. Brown, wherever you are, because the Harmon Center and Station 2 is in your district, which is my district. And I understand that you guys don't like to raise taxes, but nobody does, but if, I think all of you need to put the budget shortfall to a vote of the people and let us decide what we want to do for our city. This is a huge turning point for us, there's a lot that's on the chopping block, and I think you need to let our voices be heard as to what we want to do. You know, you are one voice for each of you, for however many constituents are in your district, but you need to let us decide what we want to do. So I implore you to please put this for a vote. The other thing, and I have brought up to you at the meetings, is right now, the county doesn't pay anything for the Parks and Rec. It's all out of city budget. And I asked about having the county kick in a little bit, I don't know if that's been discussed with the county, but I think that's something that needs to be happening. It used to be that there was a city price and a county price, and now it's only city. So it's only city people paying for this and city prices. So moving forward, hopefully, the Parks and Rec would pass the levy, that you would do a county price and a city price like it used to be years ago, and gain a little bit more revenue from that, and include that county in what you're collecting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please let us vote.
I have two comments that were sent in that asked to be read today, so I'm going to read them. The first is from Samantha Reyes. My name is Samantha Reyes, and I am a constituent of Yakima. I am writing to submit a public comment regarding farmworker rights and working conditions. As a member of this committee, there are frequent occurrences when we see folks working in agriculture, and they are usually enduring harsh heat or cold in their warehouses. What kind of protocols or protective legislation are in place to ensure that folks are not working in too extreme conditions, and does the city have resources to either, for either hydration or cooling materials available for those workers? If so, they are being, are they being distributed, and is there a tangible outreach to the workers of the workplace that the resources are available? Thank you for the opportunity to provide an input on this matter, and I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you, Ms. Reyes, I hope you're listening. The second is from Alicia Tobin. It is essential that our elected officials demonstrate full transparency with the public regarding both the process budget cuts intended to address the city's $9 million deficit and the potential consequences to those cuts. Voters have the right to make informed decisions about the future of vital city services. To do so, they must present with clear, detailed information on the cost of maintaining these services, as well as tangible impact of reducing or eliminating them. Ultimately, the choice should rest with the community, let the voters decide, but ensure that they will do so with all facts in hand. As a prevention expert in the community, it is important for voters to understand that without the Franklin, Lion Pool, our local youth will have more, be more inclined to join gangs and use substances, because voters eliminate a protective factors that give elevated risk to youth, a healthy alternative to gangs and drugs during the summer months. Voters should also understand that without a senior center, our senior citizens will experience greater depression and isolation. Local seniors will also experience reduced access to services. Finally, voters should be informed that the proposed law enforcement and fire department cuts, which is the equivalent of defunding the police, will result in no local animal control, the elimination of Yakima YPD's gang unit, leave YPD with almost zero ability to investigate property crimes. Crime and gang activity will increase dramatically as a result, public safety will be compromised. The voters will need to understand that crime in Yakima will resemble the communities like Seela, Portland, and Flint, Michigan. Yakima County is number one in the State of Washington for overdose deaths per 100,000. Cutting 10 essential fire positions will devastate their ability to respond to overdose and to save lives. The domino effect of these cuts will be equally devastating. The total, excuse me, the total overdoses will increase due to increased gang activity and due to police cuts. Police will respond to increased violent crimes, they won't respond to nonviolent crimes. New medical professionals and businesses will not come to Yakima as a result of not providing an essential service and due to increases of violent crime rates. It is incumbent on the Yakima City Council to inform the voters of the facts, the costs, and the consequences that empower voters to decide how they want to balance their budget and preserve our community's safety or approve the cuts and face the dire consequences. Thank you. So thank you, Ms. Tobin, hope you were listening. Mr. Beeler, is there anyone on Zoom this evening who would like to make a public comment?
No, Mayor Byers, there is not.
Thank you very much.
Did you do these two?
Oh, I beg your pardon, there are more, and there's always more, right? Okay. The first is Steve Epperson? Nope? Okay. The next is Carter Hild.
How's it going tonight? First, I'd like to thank the council and the city staff for the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Carter Hild, I am a resident of Kent and a proud Washington State cardroom ambassador. I've been in the cardroom industry for a few years now, and it's the best industry I've ever worked in. I've come here today to tell you that our industry is under fire. There was over 100 cardrooms in Washington 20 years ago, and now there are less than 35. The reason for this is because the Washington State Gambling Commissioners are regulating us out of business. They have limited our ability to grow by giving us very unreasonable restrictions. For example, cardrooms cannot exceed a bet of $400 per hand and are not allowed to offer sports betting. However, tribal casinos, depending on their compact with the governor, are allowed to do so. This is a problem, because as operational costs go up year over year, our margins get thinner and thinner, making it harder to survive in this industry. We cannot even upgrade our security systems without their approval, which the gambling commissioners have shot down as well. As a result, more and more cardrooms are closing every year, and many people are losing well-paying, unionized jobs, which ruins livelihoods and puts more strain on your public systems. Instead, we could stop this and bring in sports betting and higher limits to your city, but the only way we can do that is to change the minds of the commissioners. I was here at your last city council meeting, listening to the struggles of a $9 million budget deficit, and I heard you all say that you wanted to figure out a way to bring more business into your city. If we were to get the changes we are asking for, cardrooms could easily provide seven figures more of tax revenue to the City of Yakima, which would really help that deficit, and I know that's very important to all of you right now, considering you've got a lot of cuts that you're looking at and trying to figure out how you're going to spread around money. And so ways that you guys can help us would be emailing the commissioners, just spreading awareness generally, showing up to gambling commission meetings, but we could really put a decent dent out of that deficit. So that's all I have to say, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hild. Next is Natalie Kestner. Kestner, I'm sorry.
For the record, my name is Natalie Kestner, Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, thank you for your time tonight. My personal experience in the cardroom industry is 30 years long. It developed as a young person, playing cards with my family around dinner tables, which I know many people in this room still do to this day. The cardroom industry, like my colleague said, is under distress and cardrooms are closing fast. Within the last nine months, we've lost five more cardrooms statewide. They continue to go down, they continue, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous up here. More about my personal experience, 17 years as a cardroom licensed employee. I saw myself as a dealer as a person that was more of a referee. Gaming commission would regulate us, owners would keep us from cheating for the players, vice versa. These are safe and recordable places, places that you can go to and have a beer, have some entertainment, maybe play some poker with some friends. The social aspect of the game is what we want to continue to grow. Excuse me. Like my colleague said, these are union jobs now, specifically with Maverick Gaming. Maverick Gaming has come in seven years ago to attempt to help save the industry. Maverick also cares by having a program called Maverick Cares, which hands out backpacks to kids at school before going back to school, dinners for Christmas, dinner for Thanksgivings to the community. One important topic, though, is self-exclusion. No one can deny the amount of addiction that's in our world today. Our properties are training our, are training our staff members how to identify it, and also help give ideas to those customers to go into a self-exclusion program, which right now is unfair, because the tribal casino- now is unfair because the tribal casinos can opt out of that program. And so they leave our cardrooms, go to their place, and still have their addiction and doesn't solve the bottom line. With that being said, this is a career that I rather enjoyed for a long time, and I'm going to do everything I can to bring it back to life. If you find the time to reach out to me, please do. Maybe there's a way we can help each other. Also, Maverick is providing the fireworks show at the Fourth of July on Friday. We hope to see you all there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Keister. Appreciate that.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, ours is about to go off.
I thought that was ours.
Kristy Foster.
Thank you, council members, and thank you for what you do. I know, you know, it can be a thankless job for sure, so thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Kristy Foster, president and CEO of the Greater Yakima Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight because the future of Yakima's public safety and the vitality of our local businesses are deeply intertwined, and right now, both are at risk. If we're forced to cut police and fire service positions due to a budget shortfall, the ripple effect on our business community will be swift and severe. Businesses rely on a strong public safety presence to operate. Whether it's a retail shop downtown, a family restaurant, or a manufacturing plant, employees and customers need to feel safe. If public safety is weakened, we'll see increased theft, vandalism, slower emergency response times, and ultimately, businesses questioning whether Yakima is the right place to invest, expand, or even remain. Excuse me. And let's not forget about our youth. If city pools are closed due to budget cuts, we remove positive structured environments that keep kids active, engaged, and out of trouble during the summer months. The data is clear. When you take away health outlets for young people, crime and risky behaviors increase. We'll feel those consequences not just socially, but also economically. Now, I understand tough decisions must be made, but cutting these essential services without giving the citizens a vote, voice in the matter would be a mistake. I urge you, let the voters decide whether they are willing to invest a bit more into their community through a property tax increase. If they say no, so be it, but at least they had the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. And that is it for public participation. So we're going to move on. Next on the agenda is open discussion for the good of the order, and I don't think we have anything on here tonight. You may see anything? Okay. Item six is council reports. Do we have any council reports this evening? I thought my, maybe Councilman Glenn or Councilman Dicio might share a little about the conference they just went to.
Yes, we went to the AWC, well, Washington, Association of Washington Cities Conference last week in Tri-Cities, and it's a great representation of the 281 cities that are in this state. Unfortunately, we didn't have our flag, but it was great to see, to see all of the different cities and what they're going through right now, too. Everyone is a little bit hurting for, for money, and, and so we could commiserate. And there was a lot of good ideas that were, that were thrown around during that conference. It was a good experience.
Hi, it was, it was kind of fun to get back and rub shoulders with other people in the government industry. And I enjoyed the visit over there. One of the things that really struck me as I was listening to all the presentations and talking with different people, you know, here in Yakima, we get 10% of the tax revenue that's collected here in the city, and the other 90% goes other places, and majority goes to the state. And that kind of hatched an idea in my head that I'd like to see if people are really behind that. But if we changed through an initiative, the, the ability of the state to tax and said, "Look, 50% of the income that the state receives should be allocated to the cities and the counties, and then a smaller portion to the state." We find that many times the state has a different agenda than what our cities have, and it would be nice if we could have the funding that we need so that we're not looking at adding on levies just to survive. I think that there's enough money being taxed to the people of the state of Washington. I've heard that we're up to number 45 as far as being business friendly, and that's on, in the wrong direction. And just a few years ago, it was in the top 10. Washington was a good place to do business. So we need to think about that, and we need to figure out ways to work with the state and, and make sure that we are funded as cities and counties to be able to carry out the, the jobs that we have to do. I would argue that the things that we do in the city and the county are more important than the things that the state is doing. And I know they don't share that opinion over there, but as we talked with the different legislators, I found that there was a lot of support for my, my concept, or this concept. The other thing that I thought was kind of interesting, I talked with the, the Stila City Council and, and asked them what their feelings were on the trolley, and they said, "Oh, you can do it if you want to, but we don't want to pay for it." And I thought that was kind of interesting. But anyway, I had a really enjoyable time over there and got to spend a lot of time visiting with legislators, went out to dinner with our city manager and our chief of police, and we spent several hours talking about all the nuances of, of government and how to be effective and how to make it work. And that kind of sharing of information, I think, is extremely valuable. It helps us have a better insight of how we can go about the work that we're involved with, which is basically to serve the people of the city of Yakima. We don't exist to provide jobs for government workers. The government exists to serve the people of the city of Yakima, and it's kind of nice to refocus on that concept once in a while. And I really feel like our city manager and our chief of police are really tuned into that. We kind of started something that was a little bit different, you know? The trend for city councils over the years has been to bring in people with greater expertise and greater understanding. And we said, "No, no, no, let's, let's get people who've lived here in Yakima and are invested here in Yakima and love Yakima, and let's see if we can work to solve the problems together." And I'm really liking the way this experiment is going up till now. We haven't gotten everywhere that I think we need to do as a city, but I think that we're making progress, and we'll see.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Appreciate that.
I was probably too wordy, but oh, well.
I agree with you. All right, next is the consent agenda. Items listed are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. A council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda, and if approved, it would be placed on the regular agenda for discussion and consideration. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing that, and then, Clark, would you read the agenda, please?
Item 7A is approval amendments from the June 17, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting. Item B is set date of August 4, 2025, for a closed-record public hearing to consider proposed amendments to Yakima Municipal Code Title 14 subdivisions and Title 15 urban area zoning ordinance. Item C is a resolution authorizing the execution of Amendment 3 to the interagency agreement with the Department of Ecology for the former Tiger Oil Site located at 1808 North First Street, Project 2389.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilman Dicio and a second by Councilman Herrera to approve the consent agenda as read. We will need, I think, a roll call vote, please.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Dicio?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
The motion is 7-0, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you, council, for that. We have no public hearings this morning, or this morning.
For the evening.
For this evening. But we are going to move into department items. The first is Clean City Program 2025 Year-to-Date Presentation with Trace Braburn, our Solid Waste Manager.
Hi, how are you?
Wonderful, thank you. And who is with you?
No one. This is John O'Rourke, Solid Waste Co-Compliance Officer for Clean City. Good evening, council. My name is Trace Braburn, Solid Waste and Recycling Manager for the city of Yakima. This evening, I will be covering the Clean City first quarter numbers, as well as a brief overview on what Clean City has been into, up to in 2025. The city of Yakima launched Clean City Program to combat chronic blight throughout the community. The goal is to deliver a more efficient, timely, and proactive response to visual and environmental concerns impacting the city's appearance and livability. The key objectives of the program were to eliminate visual blight, such as trash, graffiti, abandoned buildings, inoperable vehicles, remove illegal dumping from city-owned rightaways, clean up homeless encampments in coordinated, coordinated and humane manner, support the Yakima Police Department in enforcing unlawful camping ordinances, collaborate with neighborhood to organize and support community cleanup events, develop and implement educational outreach to encourage community pride and responsibility, partner with local organizations and volunteers to expand program impact. So this is the 2025 Year-to-Date Clean City numbers. So this is just from January till now. So as of graffiti abatement incidents, we've had 1,900. Homeless contacted is 1,200. Shopping carts removed is 226. Illegal dumps cleared is 1,000. Homeless encampments cleared is 183. Dangerous buildings is one. Inoperable vehicles is one. And tires removed is 600. And tons of garbage removed is 83 tons. So these are the community cleanup events. This year, our community cleanup was at YVC, Yakima Valley Community College. We did 25.5 tons of waste was removed from that cleanup. We partnered with Les Schwabs and Poor Boys. Les Schwabs took care of our tires, and Poor Boys took care of our steel, both at no cost to the city, so it was a real benefit to us. We collaborated with Heights Church, Latino Community Fund, as well as Starbucks, Krispy Kreme, Pepsi, Coke. We had several partners in that cleanup, which was great for the volunteers who helped us out, collaborated with us, as well as helping us provide a good sphere for the cleanup itself. The Yakima Health District also covered all of our tonnage fees that we accumulated as a boon for the city, because it allowed us to do more with less coming out of our own budget. This is just a brief overview of what the Clean City team deals with on a daily basis. And I kind of wanted to show this to you because I think pictures speak a thousand words. So if you look at the top center picture, that's actually Juan, who covers all of our graffiti. He's a single individual that covers all the graffiti for the city of Yakima. He does a fantastic job. I could not sing his praises enough. He covers this. As you saw on the previous slide, we've had 1,900 graffiti abeyments. He's done them all. So I can't really sing his praises enough. If you look at the bottom left, that picture also means a lot to me as well, because that was what we did on the Greenway earlier this year. These gentlemen go into places that I don't think any of us really want to go into, and they deal with things we don't want to deal with. And if they're not doing it, I don't know who will. They're out early in the morning, as you can see in that top right picture, those are appliances that were dumped off, and they're out there getting and picking them up for our city to help it make, make it look as beautiful as possible. That's Nathan. He's one of our Solid Waste Code Compliance Officers as well. This is actually the Lower Calwichi Canyon Trail. We've taken that on this year. Our goal there is to manage the vegetation, excuse me, as well as any debris, litter, dangerous, make it safe for people to use that trail. They also go through there weekly and dump the garbage and make it look as nice as possible. These guys take on a lot, and this is just one of the things they do. This is what we kind of elaborated to a minute ago when I was showing you that picture on the previous slide. These are the Greenway cleanups. We've done three of them so far this year. This right here, this is from, I believe, the first cleanup they did. We've partnered with Wildland Fire Services in these cleanups. So Wildland comes through, and they help our team out with boots-on-the-ground effort, since there's just three individuals. We've also worked a little bit with the county as well. They've also funded our last cleanup, which was huge for us, too. So they paid Wildland directly with grant funding they had to really help us out. The focus has moved kind of from cleanup efforts to prevention. So these gentlemen go through twice a week now and go through the Greenway on the county-owned property and make sure that no one's moving into those encampments that we've cleared out. The biggest thing I see and the biggest thing I foresee is if we allow people to move in there, we present ourselves with a huge fire risk. A lot of these encampments, they light fires to cook food and stuff, and we want to kind of prevent that as much as possible, especially as we move into the summer months when the vegetation dries out. Here's another picture of the cleanup they did earlier this year. If you look at the left, those pictures are befores, the rights are afters. So these are cleanups, and this is just a couple of the pictures I have. I have several clip pictures just like this of other areas throughout the whole cleanup that they did. This is a three-year overview, and kind of like I mentioned before, 2025 is just year-to-date. So that's just the first six months of this year. So as you can see, most of our numbers are pretty flat. They're staying pretty consistent. The one that dropped is shopping carts. You can see that dropped from 539 last year to 226, and dropped from 746 to 226 as well. I can speak to that here a little bit more in a second to give a better explanation for you and why that is. The other number you'll see that's kind of moved up is the tires, and that has a lot to do with bulky waste. So a lot of that looks kind of bad, but some of it is a good thing because we're getting tires off the street, or actually, people are calling us up and asking us for to come, for us to come pick them up, and we're tracking those as we do them. Shopping cart ordinance, I kind of elaborated to that. We enacted a shopping cart ordinance with myself and Legal. Brooke helped me out with this in 2024, which allowed us to abate shopping carts from the public rightaways without having to have any kind of criminal activity attached to those shopping carts. It allowed us to keep them safer, the streets clean and safer. What that's also done, though, is it's allowed businesses in the city of Yakima to take more ownership in the shopping carts, because they don't want us to abate them and call them. So what they're doing now is they're doing better with locking the shopping carts down. They're going out and getting them more. We've seen a direct correlation to our change in the municipal code to what our businesses in the city of Yakima are doing to help us fight this battle. Bulky waste, bulky waste collection, I know that was something that Councilman Brown was big on, and we've, we've really enacted since 2025. It's definitely taken off. Bulky waste pickup, I, I sometimes work the office with the girls in that, at the Solid Waste Division when I get calls. When I was in there, I got like two calls in like an hour from residents in the city of Yakima that wanted us to come collect bulky waste. I know these gentlemen also work with different businesses in the city of Yakima that want us to go clean up enclosures in different areas of their, their business complex, which has been huge for us, because it's allowing us to get out there, get stuff off the streets, and keep it clean for our residents without us having to worry about any illegal dumping.
Do you have a place on the website that describes this?
Yeah, yeah, you go to Solid Waste's website. We, we talk about all this, and there's a number attached there. That's how people get ahold of us. And it also shows the rates that are attached to it as well, which are, which are very, very low. Actually, most people are shocked because they'll call, they're like, "You're going to remove this for $4?" I'm like, "Yeah, well, come get it." I know John can speak to this, too. He did a cleanup with Nathan earlier this week, which I think was just a ton of wood and yard debris, and we did it for like $200, and the gentleman was extremely satisfied with our service. So it's, it's been a huge success for us. This slide, I'm going to tease you a little bit with, oh, wrong way. I'm not going to cover this. My boss, Public Works Director Scott Schaefer, will cover this here in a little bit, but you guys can get some questions for him if you want, with me showing it to you now. But besides that, we're going to move on to questions. I know it was brief, but I wanted to try to keep it brief because I know we all have a very long night ahead of us.
Council, do we have questions for Trace?
One of the things that kind of frustrates me about your efforts is that we've got people who are littering over and over and over again, and we've got homeless people, and we're getting them off the streets, and they're coming back again. Is there anything that we can come up with that would discourage people from ongoing criminal activity and this kind of stuff?
I don't know if that's a question that I'm qualified to answer. I think that might be, there might be better people that are more qualified to answer that question. I can just speak to what Clean City's efforts are, and our, our efforts are mostly prevention, right? These gentlemen are out there every single day trying to keep it clean. I, I know before, you know, they get there at 6:00 in the morning, and they're hitting it as hard as they can to make sure that, you know, South Natchez and North First Street look as presentable as they can make it for the residents that live in our city. So as far as your question directly, Councilman Glenn, I don't know what the answer is to that, because there's, you know, that more falls into legal and the police department realm, but our, our realm would be more or less the cleanup aspect.
Maybe somebody is listening out there in the audience that will have some ideas that will share with us. I do know that as I look that we'll share with us. I do know that as I look at First Street now, when the homeless people are cleaned off, it really does look way, way better. I mean, it's a real inviting place when it's cleaned up, and I love that.
Yes, sir. And this man to my right here is, he can speak to that all day. He's, they do a fantastic job, and they care a ton about what we do for the city.
I will also comment that the creating and then using the Yakback system in the City of Yakima was just a really innovative and just terrific program available to the people in our community. I've used Yakback myself a lot of times for graffiti, and you call us on the end, within, you know, forty-eight hours, it's taken care of, you know, whether it's a pothole or graffiti. And if we didn't have that, you know, we'd be, we'd be driving a lot more potholes, we'd be putting up with a lot more graffiti. So when you showed the picture of the gentleman painting nineteen hundred pieces of graffiti in a year, I believe it, because I called in two or three of those. So, and it just amazes me, and I'm grateful for that.
Yeah, I agree.
Hey, Trace. Sorry, I'm speaking from above you. On the, on the bulky waste collection, is there a way that folks can actually request some of that, like, online at all?
We don't have that service yet, but that's actually a really good idea. I will look into doing something like that with our IT department tomorrow or the next day. I'll reach out to them and see what we can do. Right now, they're just a number to call, and they usually call our office and leave us a message or talk to one of the girls in the office, and we schedule that. But that is a good idea, Councilman Brown.
Hey, thanks.
Any other questions or comments, Council? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. Have a good night.
So is Mr. Schaefer coming forward?
Right now, I think it's me.
Oh, well, then, go ahead.
And I will, I will go ahead and kick off the budget conversation if you're ready, and call Craig Warner and Scott up here. But I'm going to go ahead and start just with a little short lead-in, because I know I've talked about this a bit. It has been, if you can believe it, almost eleven months that I've been here now. I've spent almost, I'd say, all of that time working on this budget issue and talking to our community about it, trying to be incredibly transparent, doing outreach and speeches and Q and As and anybody in the grocery store answering questions, trying to get feedback from the community. But we're at decision night, so that's tonight. We will ask the council which way we're going to go. And given that situation, tonight, we prepared some information for council and the public to see what it would look like if we addressed this issue with cuts, so that people can see the impacts if the cuts were fully implemented. We wanted to make sure that the public was fully informed and understood ramifications, because really, the community would have to lower its expectations. And it's hard to say that, because we have high standards for our community and don't want to do that. But the city would not be able to do what we've always done with these reductions. Craig is here to talk a little bit more in detail about that, but services would be reduced significantly. It would be noticed by our community. And so tonight's presentation is, Craig is here for financial questions and the finance part of it, but the departments are going to share a little more detail of the consequences than what you've seen so far. So go ahead and take it away, Craig.
All right. Good evening, Council. As you know, you've, this has been a long process that you've gone through. I've only been here a couple of months, and, but there's been a lot of ground covered in those last couple of months. And I know when you started out with 2025, the council made some decisions to use some one-time reserves, all of the remaining ARPA funds that you had that hadn't already been committed, to be able to get through 2025, to basically get to a point where you could have an opportunity to look at different things. We could address the community and work with the community to help determine where we needed to go for the future. And tonight ultimately is to get direction from the council about where we need to go. I think you've heard from your budget committee, and for the most part, Vicky and I as well have also made recommendations, and our recommendations have been about seven point two million dollars worth of revenue, about one point eight million dollars worth of cuts, and other fees that we would increase as well. And the budget committee was similar, just a little different funding, but the same, the same numbers of about seven point two million in revenue and about one point eight million in cuts. So what we wanted to do tonight was let the five largest departments that are going to be impacted by these cuts basically give the council one more opportunity to hear what those impacts are, and those are the police, the fire, streets, parks, and then clean cities as well. So I think the last time we met, we had talked about, we were talking about about fifty-six positions that would be impacted. And again, this is not really about the positions. It's really going to be about how the community is going to be impacted by these discussions. So you don't need to hear anymore from me. I'm going to let, turn this over to Scott, and he will talk about clean cities and parks, and we'll go from there. And streets.
Okay. Good evening. Scott Schaefer, Public Works Director. We just heard the report from Trace as far as all the great things that he's been doing, him and his crew, with Clean City as far as addressing blight within Yakima. I think they've been doing a great job. Unfortunately, I've been tasked with what it was possibly looked like with budget cuts. We've been tasked with looking at reducing the Clean City budget by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as well as reducing the graffiti removal program. So what does that look like? Well, it's positions. And so we're going to be proposing, as a result, looking at taking a full-time attorney that is assigned to Clean City and reducing it to a fifty percent position, but then taking that fifty percent and equally sharing with both Clean City and Risk Management. So it'd be a seventy-five percent reduction for Clean City. But what that does, it reduces what that individual can actually do for Clean City as far as, you know, working on dangerous buildings, revising codes and so forth. That's going to have an impact. And as a result, we're also looking at eliminating a code compliance officer position that's actually stationed out of City Hall here that's associated with Clean City. They're the ones that go out there inoperable, inoperable vehicles, dangerous buildings, anything that, you know, blight-related on private property and so forth. So we'd have to eliminate that position. And to address the reduction in graffiti removal, we would be removing, eliminating the code compliance assistant position. That was Juan that you saw in the, in the presentation, that that's what he does each day, is addresses the graffiti. And so, you know, we've been very fortunate with the way we've been structured, is that a lot of times through the Yakback system, we'll get a complaint, either it's trash removal or for graffiti. We, oftentimes, we can address it that same day or the next day. With this type of a move, we're actually going to have to incorporate graffiti into the existing solid waste compliance officer positions. They're the ones that go out there do the homeless encampments, cleaning out the litter, the rightaways and so forth. So they're going to have to share their time between trash removal and graffiti. So the way I see it is we're going to have to bundle when we do graffiti, certain days of the week. So graffiti is going to be more visible to the public, and you're going to see more trash in the rightaway. But that's the impact of making these reductions. And just to put things in perspective, the crews right now, on average, will remove about three tons of trash a week from the rightaways and then address about eighty incidences of graffiti. So you're going to see a drastic increase in all of those. It's also going to be more of a challenge for the crews to address larger cleanups, because of just trying to keep up with the day-to-day.
Hey, Scott.
Yes.
Question for you. Is it, is it possible to work the Clean City budget aspect into already a ratepayer model that is already refuse and other things?
No, because with this type of a program, it has to be from general funds. When you use rates, they have to be used for a very specific purpose. So if it's from refuse, it has to be for a specific residential garbage pickup.
Okay. Even though it's residential garbage pickup in the city of Yakima?
Correct. It needs to be very specific, yes.
Well, it also seemed to me that if you don't know who left it there, or even if you know and they can't pay, you're going, you won't have any compensation for that anyway. Yeah.
Right, right. So in all, we're looking at a budget reduction of over three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which equates to about a forty-three percent reduction in our current budget. So that's what, unfortunately, that's what Clean City would look like under Moving on to streets. Street and traffic, the primary function of the street and traffic division is to preserve and maintain the city of Yakima's transportation system, focusing on public safety to provide safe streets for motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists. I've said it many times before, but street and traffic really should be just as much about public safety as fire and police, but we're never budgeted as such. Our current budget going into twenty-six is a little over seven million dollars. With the proposed budget reduction, we're looking at a little over nine hundred thousand dollars. That represents over twelve percent of our budget. So here's a list of what the proposals are, which I'll cover in the next few slides. But we're going to really focus in on street maintenance first. We're looking at reducing street maintenance by five hundred thousand dollars. And so in order for us to achieve that, we're probably going to have to eliminate two street specialist positions. We're actively recruiting right now for the last two vacancies that we have, but we're putting a pause on it right now, knowing that we may have to eliminate them. Earlier this year, we were down seven positions altogether. And so with the help of HR, we've climbed our way back to almost being fully staffed. But currently, right now, we only have nineteen individuals, and we have over four hundred miles of roadway to maintain. And so the significance of that is we're hoping to get two more, because we need at least seventeen staff members at any given time if we're doing a major project, whether it be snow removal or a chip seal operation, because of the different components that each of those crews bring, whether they're flagging or running the chipper or running the trucks. If we have less than seventeen, a lot of times, we have to postpone that project. Or if we're able to somehow do the project, it's going to be prolonged and it's going to cost us more as a result.
I have a question. I think this may be correct, but I don't know, that a lot of people will see a project going on, and they'll see one person working, another person standing there, somebody in the hole, and they'll say, "Gosh, what is that about?" But I have understood that the state has, has placed, I wouldn't call them guidelines, the state has placed mandates on how many people, for safety reasons, have to be in a particular job. So we don't necessarily have control of that. That's a state mandate. Okay.
Yeah, you need spotters, especially if they're working in a trench or so forth, but definitely for, you know, traffic control and so forth, yes.
Okay, thank you.
If we eliminate those two positions, that's going to be a little over two hundred thousand dollars. We're also going to be looking at reducing our equipment replacement funds of about a hundred and sixty thousand. What that's going to result in is us using this equipment longer than its life expectancy. So we're going to see more frequent breakdowns and higher repair costs. We're also going to eliminate any rentals of outside of equipment. When we do some projects, a lot of times, instead of going out and purchasing a high-end piece of equipment that we're only going to use once or twice a year, like a grader or roller of some sort, we'll go out and rent that. So by not renting, projects may take a little bit longer, because we just don't have the proper equipment to actually conduct that. But we're also going to be focusing in on reducing some of the operation, operating supplies. As you see in the slide here, we'll cut back on the amount of weeds that we actually spray in the rightaway. We'll actually start reducing how much supplies we purchase for snow and ice control. That's our liquid de-icer, which is extremely expensive. Our salt, gravel, sand, we'll reduce those as needed. We'll reduce the amount of material that we use for pothole repair. And then we'd have to take a look at our internal city projects. We do a lot of those for other cities and divisions, or other city divisions and departments, particularly the Parks Department. What you see here is we did, we installed the pathways at Chesterly Park, as well as put in a much-needed retaining wall at Franklin. We provide that labor for these projects to keep the cost as low as possible for these divisions. They provide the materials and the supplies to make it happen. If we can't do these, then those divisions will have to contract that out, and it's really going to impact their budgets. It's going to be extremely expensive. That's why by us doing it has been a real benefit for years, for the last several years. One other area that we're seriously looking at having to approach is the elimination of residential snow removal. I brought this up back in twenty thirteen, or twenty twenty-three, of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so what does this look like? When we have a snow event, you know, our crews go out and we have our priority areas. When we have three inches or more of snow, we go out and start plowing. We'll hit the residential areas, as far as, the residential areas right now aren't done by our crews, but they'll hit the main arterials, the collectors, as you'll see on this map here, the downtown area, that's when our snow alert is in effect. But they'll address the hospital, medical clinics, the schools, the overpass, underpasses, and out west, where the storms usually come from, we'll hit the areas that have the hills. So what's been very successful for the last few years is that as soon as we start plowing, we have our contractors coming in and start addressing the residential areas. That way, everything gets done relatively at the same time. If this proposal goes through, we're not calling the contractors, but we're going to maintain the priorities that I just mentioned by our street crews. They'll get into the residential areas only after those are completed. Now, in the meantime, if there's another snow event, we're going to go right back to our priorities. So it could be days or weeks before we even get into the residential areas. So what does that look like? It's not going to be good, because you're going to have people that are going to be homebound for a while, because they can't simply get out of their driveways. As you see in this picture here, we have a fire truck that, or fire apparatus, sorry, guys, that's actually stuck. Now, luckily, it's not one of ours. It's from Milwaukee, but the scenario can be very much the same if we're not plowing the roads. But regardless, there's going to be an impact on the response times from Yakima Fire, YPD, ambulance services. In addition, it's going to impact garbage collection. Another area that we're looking at having to eliminate would be our sidewalk improvement tree removal. Many of you may not know this, but the repair and maintenance of sidewalks are really the responsibility of the property owners, the adjacent property owners. That's by municipal code and RCW. Now, what I'm showing here is that if it's a city tree that's disrupting the sidewalk, or one of our utility boxes or manuals, then it's the city's responsibility. Now, over the last few years, we've used the hundred and five thousand dollars to start to address this. That's just a drop in the bucket to the issue at hand. But if that goes away, I have no means to address this. And that means the city's liability goes to the roof.
I know that, you know, there are just multiple opportunities for people to sue the city, because they trip on the sidewalk. And there are lots of sidewalks where that happens. And even though it's a homeowner's responsibility, the city is one that becomes liable. So if we can't keep those sidewalks repaired, it does increase our liability.
Yeah, and increases our overall costs as well.
If a homeowner wants to fix their sidewalk out in front, do they have to call the city first, or can they?
They'll have to get a permit and so forth, yes.
Mr. Schaefer, real fast, do you know if the Yakima School District has any responsibility for snow power as well, or is it just their property in the parking lot? Because I've seen that.
Just their property.
Okay.
And sidewalks. And then alley maintenance, that would go away. We budget thirty thousand a year. We have over forty miles of alleys throughout the city. A lot of them are, look like this where they're gravel. Over time, with usage and the weather and so forth, you know, they start to rut, they get potholes and so forth. But we try to, we don't address all of them every year. You know, we pick the worst of the worst and go that route. But we have seen some issues with the use of the alleys by both residents and by businesses. We're seeing a lot more rentals popping up, whether it's in someone's garage, or someone's converting a house to an apartment or whatever. But there's insufficient street parking, so they're using the alleyways basically as a city road, a city street. And so, and then as far as businesses are concerned, a lot of their, I shouldn't say a lot, but there are some that are actually using the alleys as their main entrance and exits. And so, right now, both residents and businesses, if this proposal goes through, will have basically three options. The first one would be to wait to see if the city is successful in securing more grants to do paving of the alleys and putting in a proper storm drain each, or they can form a or they can form an LID, a local improvement district, and then they can share the expense with everyone that's affected by that alleyway at their expense, um, or they accept the condition of the alleys. That's, that's where we're at. Um, but I do have to say, um, I'll, I'll finish up by saying that, um, as your, um, Public Works Director, I am very concerned with these proposed cuts to the budget to the street division, uh, because of all the cuts that have come year after year after year into this division. Um, it's to the point where if this goes through, you're not gonna have much of a street division left to address anything. And so, and that's extremely concerning because of the fact that what these guys do each day helps to address public safety. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
One of the things that, uh, I went to Hawaii for the first time this spring, and as I was walking around, first of all, I rode on an interstate, and I asked the taxi driver, I said, what other states are you connected with on this highway? But anyway, to get to my point, um, the infrastructure, you know, a resort, huh, huh, island, thousand, you know, very expensive place to go, and I was looking around, and I thought Yakima's got better infrastructure than this place does, which was kind of amazing because it's always seventy-five degrees there. They don't get some of the issues that we have. So the argument that I'm kind of intrigued with is, and, and this is kind of brought up by, I've got a, a friend that was on a, an alley that didn't get paved, and the next block over did, and she was furious. I want mine paved. What kind of, I mean, it's, you really can't put a number on it, but when you have good infrastructure, it creates a better business environment, and what is that worth? I don't have the answer to that, I, but I think that's something that people should think about when they talk about, uh, not supporting or supporting, if infrastructure costs, you know, an increased levy or whatever.
I do have a little bit of a question for you, and I, I can understand alleys being paved for businesses, for relying on deliveries and other things. Um, I question sometimes alleys where it's residences because they are using the alley primarily to park a car. And so if you get a few potholes or have to go around them, not bad. If you pave an alley that's in a residential area, you're gonna have what you don't want, which is people speeding through the alley, because that already happens on the streets. So I was told that the potholes are like speed bumps, will turn or speed through alleys.
Traffic control.
Traffic control, thank you.
Calming.
As a person who spends way too much time driving through unpaid alleys, some of them are unbelievably difficult, unbelievably difficult to navigate, and having them paved creates a better ambiance for the community, I believe.
I agree.
Yeah. I, I grew up here, and we lived in our house, um, fifty years, I think, and it never got paved, the alley never was paved, and so mom would put her, her, uh, washing up on the line, and these cars would go by and all the dust, but, but yeah, it, it is what it is, it's still not paved.
Sorry, I just had to fill in the question.
Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council Ken Wilkinson with Parks and Rec. Like Scott, you know, the function of the Streets Department, we have the function for the Parks and Recreation Division, and it's to maintain the leisure services and park facilities for the community. And our mission is to provide beautiful places with quality recreation opportunities that enrich the well-being for our community. You see our budget there at, uh, six point seven million dollars for twenty-five and twenty-six, and that's a staff of fifty-three point nine five full-time equivalents. Understand that many of those are temporary employees, though those are not all full-time employees, uh, with the Parks Department. We had a budget reduction target of about two million dollars, which is twenty-nine point five percent of our budget. Our budget is made up of general fund, it is also made up of our fees and charges, as well as utility tax, and we do get a few grants. I'll go through quickly the different divisions that, and service units within Parks Department that, uh, we brought to you as part of the survey, and went out to the community, and I'll show a slide for each one of these, but I wanted to show you the overall. And then there's the total at the bottom of two point one million dollars, which is more than what we were targeted with, but, uh, there's some information as we share through this, uh, for us to consider. First was closing the Washington Fruit Community Center, and for each one of the slides, you'll see the expenses, but many of these have revenue associated with them. And then there's a net budget reduction. So even though the Washington Fruit Community Center, uh, roughly expenses are about four hundred thousand dollars, there is revenue that is part of that. And then net budget reduction would be three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, roughly, uh, for closing that facility. We also have youth sports, and you see the expenses there, and then also the revenue, and with a net budget reduction of sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, understand that it has always been our, our effort and, and purpose to keep the fees as low as we possibly can in order to allow as many kids to be able to participate in our programs. So that's why you see that difference there in expenses versus revenue. I failed to mention that the Washington Fruit Community Center, one of the, some of the programs that are there, I've talked about them in the past, but so many of the programs there are for kids. Uh, the after-school program, the beyond-the-bell program is there, as well as our summer day camp program. We do meals there for seniors, and also exercise and all kinds of activities. The other thing that's possible with Washington Fruit is for community groups to utilize that facility. I won't talk about staff, because I think we've talked about that in the past. Youth program at Kissel Park, we have a day camp going on in the summer at Kissel Park. Uh, in the past, we've had seventy-five kids in that program, however, we reduced that number to sixty this year, and the reason for that is because of the increase in minimum wage. So we budgeted for the same amount of minimum wage, and in the process of the year, then it went up to sixteen sixty-eight, so that reduced, uh, what we could do for providing for kids. So, uh, just understand that, uh, as you look at this number, now we're looking at sixty kids, and that is, um, five days a week, uh, from nine AM till four PM, for eight weeks in the summer. A great staff that run all kinds of really great fun programs for, uh, that camp.
If you had unlimited funds, how many kids would come?
Well, in the past, we've been at a hundred, and probably that's about the right number. Uh, any more than that, I think it would overwhelm both Washington Fruit Miller Park Program and also the Kissel Park Program. Uh, much more than that, and it's difficult to manage in those parks. So, and we have done that in the past. Uh, there was some dollars that were allocated years ago, and I cannot remember where they came from, but there were some special dollars, uh, that we utilized to bump up those numbers. I will say again, thanks to Forbes Mercy for his donation last, uh, last winter, a fifty thousand dollars, helping to underwrite the day camp program at Miller Park. So thanks so much to him, and he's hopefully gonna stop in this next week and take a look at, uh, the program that's going on there. So this program here, that budget reduction at Kissel Park would be eighty-three thousand dollars. Softball and athletics, this is all of our, uh, adult programs, uh, for sports, softball, uh, volleyball, and then our tournaments, baseball, softball tournaments that we have. One of the things we're very, very proud of is that we host the Washington High School Girls Fast Pitch and Slow Pitch, um, State Championships each year, so that's two large tournaments. We have players that come in from all over the state. Uh, our hotels are full, our restaurants are full, and it is a huge economic impact on our community when we're able to provide these kinds of tournaments. And we have other tournaments throughout the year, uh, maybe not as large as the state tournament, uh, for state softball, but there are some that are, they're quite large. You see that the net budget reduction of thirty-six thousand, we've talked, Craig talked just a little bit ago about maybe looking at some fees. This is certainly an area where we would look at fees and increasing them potentially to close that gap, and then make that to be a budget-neutral, uh, service unit. Again, we try to keep our fees and costs as low as we possibly can. Uh, for me, anyone that can't participate that wants to is certainly something that we don't wanna have.
Mr. Wilkinson, I know two years ago, that's what we said, no increases to the youth programs, but we did increase to the adult programs in our master fee schedule, which was two years ago, so I don't know if it's time to increase them, but another question is, the attendance for that, um, how's that looking at, and would I, do you have a feeling like people would pay more, or?
I think they will. Uh, now, how much? That's always the big question, because at some point, some people are gonna go, you know, it's just too much, uh, for, for me to continue to participate in this, and something's gotta go, and that, that potentially could happen, um, but it's, it's certainly something we wanna look at.
Thank you.
Moving on to community recreation, what is our community recreation? Those are our concerts and our movies and our specialty events for families. You see the picture there in the lower left, that's our letters to Santa. We started that during COVID, when we couldn't do a lot of our indoor activities, and they drive through the Public Works parking lot and get to see all kinds of lights and, uh, receive different gifts and things. Uh, so those would be the things that would be cut along with our, uh, movies that we do at Chesterly Park. We do five, uh, this year, we've done six in the past, and then our concerts we have at Franklin Park, and then also the Viva La Musica concerts at, at Miller Park. There are other things that are part of this as well. Uh, we do some day trips with teens, uh, during the summer, and we have some even in the winter where they go skiing and are part of that program. So again, you know, we're not charging a lot for these very free events. Uh, I will say that during our community survey for our comprehensive master plan, these ranked very, very highest people's favorite things to do, concerts and movies and the free family events. Lions Pool, you see the expenses there, and again, like everything else, the expenses have gone up. Uh, our u- our utilities have gone up, the price of chlorine and chemicals has gone up, minimum wage definitely has had an impact on our swimming pools, because we have to guard them fully, whether we are full at capacity or not, because you just don't know by state regulations. And you see the revenue there, and then the net budget reduction for, uh, closing of this facility. Uh, we do have lap swimming, we have rec swimming, we have exercise classes, uh, we have water walking, and I was there this morning and, and saw just a number of people were enjoying that pool and getting their exercise, who cannot exercise anywhere else. Uh, the swim lessons, of course, is critical, and one of the other thing that's important about Lions Pool is that it is a place where we train our lifeguards. We run lifeguarding classes throughout the year. Uh, we would not have been able to staff the new pool at the Aquatic Center at Martin Luther King Junior Park without this facility being able to train lifeguards. There's other things too, our high school swim teams all practice here and, uh, run their meets here. We had a meeting this morning, and we're hope, hoping to host the district meet for swimming, uh, in the fall and possibly in the winter as well, which again, the economic impact is incredible, because people are coming from all over the state, from Pullman and, and from Spokane, to come here to be part of, of these programs and these tournaments and, and competitions. Franklin Pool, you see the budget there, of course, we're only open in the summertime, the revenue is less, um, than maybe, you know, some other facilities that are open a year-round, but then you see the net budget reduction as well. Uh, so many of the things that we do there are similar to what we're doing at the new facility and at Lions Pool, swim lessons, of course, uh, in those summer months, along with water exercise, but recreation swim is, uh, so popular here at Franklin, although I will say, a little less popular now that we've opened the new facility. So we have seen, uh, numbers decrease a little bit at Franklin, but, uh, I believe, especially with these hot temps, we're definitely seeing a lot more people utilizing both of the outdoor pools.
And this is the only one that does the paws in the pool?
We, we do the paws of the pool, that is on the last Sunday, uh, of the summer for us, and it is a huge event. Uh, if you ever get a chance, that is something you have to come and see. I still can't believe that all the dogs get along. They just play so well together, and the owners are pretty good, too.
I wanna bring my cat.
Yes.
Oh, good luck. Does, does your cat like water?
I'm just kinda curious, uh, I know that, uh, where my kids live, there are swimming facilities, and they offer an annual family membership where people can get that and just pay it and then use it whenever, and I know in their case, they really don't go that much, it would be cheaper to pay the individual, but they do it to kinda support the program. Do we do anything like that?
We do, we have all those different passes and things that people can buy, three-month pass and so forth, and ten, ten punch yard, punch card and things like that.
Lions does, for sure.
Hey, Ken.
Yes.
Hey, we, uh, just a question on some of the other pools, uh, not the new pool, but some of the other pools, uh, one of the complaints has been recently, has been, um, that the, that the lines are severely long to try to get into them, because we don't have enough lifeguards, um, to actually staff it. Is there a solution to that?
That is a challenge that we're definitely facing with, not at our new Aquatic Center, but at, uh, Franklin Pool. We did, we did have some challenges with hiring enough guards this year. We had five that were ready to go and, before the summer, and chose to take other jobs. So that decreased the number of kids that we can allow, people that we can allow into Franklin Pool. I still think we're at a hundred and fifty or two hundred, uh, but we're working hard. We're gonna run another lifeguard class at Lions Pool, I believe, starting next week, and we have those that are interested. So, uh, we were very concerned with opening a new facility, being able to staff, uh, as many lifeguards. It's not easy to be a lifeguard, not everybody can be a lifeguard. You have some athletic testing that you have to show, you have to have swim, swim proficiency, so it is a, it's a bit of work for, for young people to be able to become a lifeguard. Moving on then, talking about, again, getting to that two million dollar reduction number of closing the Harmon Center, and you see the expenses there and the revenue, the net budget reduction of, uh, three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. We've talked about the Harmon Center a lot, of course, we have tons and tons of programs there, from exercise to, uh, the senior nutrition card table games, as well as education classes, we have computer classes. One of the things that, um, a lot of people don't realize is we also provide services. They do blood pressure checks, they also do dementia screening, we've done, you know, different workshops on avoiding scams and things like that, which are certainly, uh, something that plague our seniors.
It's really a lifeline for seniors in this city.
It is.
Because, um, you know, they need that, the, uh, the going to see other people and, and socialization is what I was trying to say. Yeah, and, and those, those services are, are really important for them, and they may not get them anywhere else. I know my mom went there, and she was alive, and she loved it. Yeah.
Yep. One of the things that just happened last Thursday was our active aging expo, the Harmon Center, and that's our, our target group is seniors that wanna stay active. Uh, they're not gonna sit at home in their rocking chairs, they wanna play pickleball, they wanna go to the golf course, they wanna exercise, they want all the different services that they possibly can to enjoy their, their latter years, and so that was very, very well attended, uh, this last Thursday. I'm also very proud of the number of volunteer hours that we have at the Harmon Center. People are willing to give of their time to make that facility a great place, and in twenty-twenty-four, we had over nine thousand, uh, volunteer hours, uh, to help with that facility. This one, we'll talk about park maintenance, there's a lot of, uh, text on that slide, which I don't like to do, but I wanted you to see the, to see the magnitude of what park maintenance does. With over, almost four hundred acres of land, lots of pathways, uh, softball fields, skate parks, uh, dog park, and then picnic shelters and playgrounds as well, uh, that park maintenance supports all of, all of this.
Is that the vandalism?
That is the Franklin Park swimming pool, uh, bathroom for the community, uh, was completely destroyed. All the porcelain was broken. So park maintenance, uh, the expense is at about two point three million dollars, revenue is sixty-one thousand, and that is mostly from picnic shelter rentals, and that money goes back into, uh, park maintenance. We also have some donations, people donate money for, uh, picnic tables or park benches. So your net budget, the net budget for, for maintenance is two point two, and then the targeted budget reduction of twenty-eight percent, or half a million dollars, brings it to, uh, one point seven, uh, million dollars. This slide, I think, is, uh, pretty telling in how, over the last twenty-one years, about park maintenance. Uh, our population has definitely grown, uh, from two thousand and four to two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, I think our number at what last I heard was over a hundred thousand, I think these are twenty-twenty-four numbers, uh, so we're gone from eighty-three thousand to a hundred thousand. Our acreage has increased in parks, uh, from three sixty-five to four hundred. We, uh, built Kissel Park, as many of you know, uh, and opened that park, uh, that was prior to me being here, and then also acquired the West Valley Community Park from the county. You see there in two thousand and four, we had, uh, the permanent twelve-month employees in park maintenance of thirteen, and then now today, we have seven. We have nine-month seasonals, we have had eight of those in oh-four, and we are at six. We have had eight of those in oh four and we are at six. We have eight hundred and sixty-six hour temps. That's as many hours as our temporary employees can work. They don't receive any benefits. And we had at least nine budgeted back in oh four and now we're at six. The one thing that we often forget is we had a Department of Corrections crew and they would come four days a week, sometimes with up to ten individuals with someone supervising them. And they would do those extra things like helping with the cemetery to get ready for uh Memorial Day or for a grand opening for uh one of our facilities or really doing some extra work that we need done with leaves or whatever. And uh we had to cut that from the budget, I believe. It was uh twenty eleven when that got cut and that really did, that really did hurt. So what does that mean to be eliminated or reduced? Uh bathrooms, bathrooms, uh we would open them only for uh events and for reservations in picnic shelters so that we would not be able to get to them every day. It's a tremendous amount of labor for our park maintenance staff to get to those restrooms, to clean them, to prepare them, restock them and to repair the damage that has been done. As Scott mentioned about graffiti, we would be much slower at responding to those things. Uh, one of the things that is great is Clean City. Uh, we work hand in hand with them, just like we do with the streets departments on on projects. Uh, sometimes we can't get to the graffiti in the parks as fast as we would like to. That's where Clean City jumps in and helps us out and we can't thank them enough for what they're willing and able to do. Picking up the trash, we pick up trash every day in the parks. Now we would go to maybe once or twice a week. We would eliminate fertilizing and weed spray. Uh, we would have to reduce our tree trimming and tree removal. Uh, tree removal, of course, uh is something we do. It's a, it's a risk management decision. Some trees are dangerous and need to be taken down. We would have to reduce uh that. Reduce our irrigation, certainly, uh we like our grass green, but with this uh this cut, we would definitely have to let them go as what we say, we would lean them out and they would be not as green, they would be um a little, little more brown. Eliminating a full, four full-time staff and then three of our temporary staff for a total reduction of uh five hundred thousand dollars to get to that number. The last one is the reduction of the domestic water that we use to water the cemetery in the month of May. Uh, so many years we had challenges with, we're getting ready for Mother's Day, we're getting ready for Memorial Day and all of a sudden the canals turn to chocolate milk and debris and we cannot water. And so just before, what I always say to the guys, it's our Super Bowl for the cemetery is is Mother's Day and Memorial Day when so many people come and we are looking at our worst. So we were able to hook up to the system to be, to create a uh a way to use domestic water during that month of May and that budgeted amount is fifteen thousand dollars and we would remove that from the budget. We do have irrigation water there, uh which we use quite a bit, but just.
The tree removal kind of opened you up for lit for litigation too if um, you know, a tree falls over and damages property.
It does, definitely does.
So do you do the yard by the uh fire department on Fortieth and Inglewood?
We used to, but that got cut from our budget, excuse me, years ago and we stopped uh being able to mow that for them and take care of that. And I believe, don't quote me, but I, we either gave them one of our old mowers or they bought it at a very reasonable price.
Just so you know, it looks terrible with dead grass and weeds growing around the perimeter. I'm like, what's going on here? It's not part of Yakima.
I think I might be able to help with that.
It's not your fault, there you go.
No, and actually, um, Chief can probably talk about that, but they are converting that to a low moisture garden from the green grass.
Well, it looks terrible right now.
Okay, you you can give him heck.
I would concur with Councilman Glenn.
Thank you, appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkens, I appreciate that. Chief Markham, welcome.
Well, now you know what to start with, Chief.
Well, good evening, Mayor, council members. So this part of the presentation is the Fire Department's um budget impacts that we're gonna discuss. So we're gonna start off with kind of a refresher of where this one point seven million dollars came from. So we had this discussion about two years ago and we were asked to cut our budget ten percent and illustrate to you what that would look like. And at that point in time, that was one point seven million dollars. So I also explained to you that the only way that the Fire Department could do this is through a reduction in expenditures to the degree that it would be uh personnel cuts. And so why was that? Uh, that's because ninety percent of our budget is salaries and benefits. So how did we get to the one point seven? Well, we took the average firefighter salary, which was a around a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And uh, we divided that into the one point seven and tried to get to the closest number of whole personnel that that would uh equal to and that came up to twelve. Twelve firefighters equate to one full company or the staffing for one station. So we operate three shifts and it takes about four personnel per shift um to man that station or that company and that equals the twelve. Uh, so the reducing to that staffing level would require the closing of a station. I'll explain that a little bit uh later on the slide. And then our daily staffing would need to change from twenty-three to twenty. So some of these slides may look familiar if you were at that workshop presentation because this is what our current. Did you have a question, Mayor?
I I do. So if it's twelve for a station because you're doing three separate shifts, so that's four per shift and the truck goes out, aren't there at least three people that have to go out with the truck?
That is correct.
And so then one person is left to man the station?
No, one person is allowed to be off on vacation or cover for when we have somebody that's injured or ill. And so we'll cover the the kinda how the staffing, what we're budgeted for, what our daily staffing levels are, what we allow for vacation time off and and that'll be illustrated, probably answer your question.
Yes, I'm I'm just a little concerned about services. What if we have two trucks at the station?
Well, we'll cover that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is our current daily staffing. Uh, we do operate seven companies. Uh, you can see the stations that are outlined with their numbers, ninety-one through ninety-six, uh which includes uh the City of Union Gap, Truck ninety-one. And so our total daily staffing is twenty-three because we have one person that's dedicated to the aircraft rescue firefighting apparatus at the airport and twenty-four hours a day. And we have one shift commander that operates at the main station ninety-one as the incident commander for first on scene for incidents. So this is what our personnel shift strength looks like. So we are budgeted for thirty full-time employees. Our daily staffing on the previous slide was twenty-three. What we have bargained and allowed for for time slots off are six slots for firefighters and company officers and one for the shift commander, which leaves the difference without anybody calling in sick at zero. So you might ask yourself, well, why did we bargain and leave ourselves with the zero uh capacity to cover for anybody that's off? Well, we didn't. We had three extra firefighters. Those firefighters were frozen several years ago and now they're just eliminated and will not be filled. That's how we got to zero. Um, so we did have a buffer of one, uh now we're at zero. So this doesn't cover anything for when somebody calls in sick or if they're injured. Uh, we have, this just covers what's been uh scheduled in advance. And they schedule all their vacation time um a year in advance. So we know what that is. What we don't know what is, is injuries and illnesses that occur throughout the year. Oh, and by the way, on average, we have about two firefighters per shift that are out injured, ill um for a significant amount of time.
So how does the overtime then happen? I mean, I know how it happens, but how does that affect the budget?
It's terrible. That's why our budget for overtime is one point six million dollars. The request for overtime for last year that I requested wasn't a, uh, that was an average. You could look back to the previous years and you can see it was one point five, one point six. And that's to staff that, twenty-three personnel per day per shift.
Would wouldn't, I I know that a few years ago that was taken down to zero. That was a a budget cut reduction in staff, if I remember correctly.
What was taken down to zero?
The the uh number of officers.
Buffer.
Yeah.
When we froze the positions, yes.
When you froze them. So, gosh, am I thinking because of the extreme cost of overtime, time and a half, particularly when you have men that have been there longer and have a larger salary, wouldn't it be less expensive to have more firefighters trained?
Mathematically, yes, it would be. More firefighters and have the ability to staff above what is needed and account for what we already know is is a proven fact of the average number of firefighters that are not able to come to work, yes, you'd be paying them straight time versus time and a half.
Hey, Chief, is there a reason we can't use volunteers in some of these stations?
Well, we did have volunteers, a small cadre of volunteers that we kind of um came with us with uh the contract with Union Gap. And um, so to get back into recruiting for volunteers, for one, volunteering in the fire service is being, become more and more difficult all the time. The training requirements that are necessary to train firefighters to that level, the commitment for them to be able to respond twenty-four hours a day. Um, also, it's not a full-time position. It's not something that you can lot rely on for an occupation. It is a part-time volunteering, part-paid position. And uh, right now, we need the capacity to have full-time professional firefighters. We run thirteen thousand calls a year. You could compare that to the largest fire district in this county and probably in the state of Washington, Fire District Five. And we surpassed them by five or six times the number of calls that we have in the Akama, so.
Well, well, I understand that. I'm just wondering, is there a, an actual, I mean, as we're trying to look at cost-cutting factors, I mean, most of the fire districts in our valley are run by volunteers. Most of the fire, a lot of the fire districts, even on the west side, are run by volunteers. And so I'm just wondering why we don't have at least some capacity built in for volunteers to lower some overtime or some other aspects that we could do.
Well, it'd take probably at least four to five volunteers to fill one full-time firefighter position. So now you're talking turnouts at five times the amount um to have them staffed, trained, equipped, to be able to respond um to cover those positions. And quite frankly, the reliability for volunteering i- is inherently in the name of volunteering. Um, it's not reliable. I mean, it's, you can't mandate to come in, them to come in to pull a shift. It it has to be on their own terms because it's, it's not their full-time occupation. So um, if you really look around and see some of the other smaller departments that are volunteers and they're close neighbors of ours, what are they doing? They're transitioning into full-time firefighting positions. East Valley used to have a fairly large vol um volunteer fire department. They probably have a half a dozen fire volunteer firefighters. The City of Seela has full-time firefighters now, twenty-four hours a day. So those departments have seen the impacts of calls increase in the demand for services that requires full-time firefighters to staff.
But I'm not, I'm not asking us to remove full-time firefighters. I I think I'm, I I think, I wanna preface that. What I'm asking is that as we're looking at, you know, your potential cuts here of twelve, um, that I'm I'm going, why can't we have a force of fifteen, twenty, thirty volunteers that are just on a rotation aspect that, and maybe, and and I get volunteers are volunteers. However, I'm also looking at it from a perspective of like, is there an actual reason other than just, well, we need this? Well, seventy-two percent of the calls are EMS calls that we have responding currently. They're not fire calls, they're EMS calls. So as we look at these things, I'm going, is that not something that a volunteer could actually respond to?
A volunteer firefighter that's an EMT that gets a hundred and eighty hours worth of, you know, training to become that. Is it possible? Of course, everything's possible, but to start a a program up like that and get the commitment, that is a huge task to try to, you know, make up the difference in the staffing, in my opinion. So.
Is there a reason why we send a minimum of three? A a lot of these, you know, like I see homeless people all the time overdosing and you get three fire department workers there, is is that necessary or could two do the job?
For safety reasons, we staff three firefighters on an engine. Mainly because of, well, there's several reasons. For one, if we have to do CPR on a patient, we have to do CPR on patient, high-performance CPR for forty-five minutes before the patient can even be loaded to it in an ambulance and transported to the hospital. That's our protocol. Because high-performance CPR is what saves people's lives. Now, because of the call volume that we go on all the time, they're not always in the station going to the next call. There's a slide in here that I'll illustrate that shows you the number of times that when one station's dispatched to a call, the percentage of times, so then they have another call within their zone that some other station has to respond to. So if they're not in the proper apparatus to respond to the fire call, then we don't have enough personnel. So um, that's why we staff them with a minimum of three personnel. Actually, NFPA says we should have four, but um, you know, when we have a structure fire, this working structure fire, it takes sixteen to seventeen people on scene. And we actually have um rules as far as Washington State that we have to have so many people on the outside of a structure before we can allow people to go on the inside of a structure in an immediately dangerous to life and health atmosphere just in case something bad goes happen. Otherwise, Ellen and I really frown upon us, you know, violating that, so we don't.
You know, one of the things that kind of intrigues me is, it it sounded like your injury or disability, the number of people who are off because of injuries seems awful high. I don't know, is that normal for their?
Firefighting is a dangerous profession. I mean, when you're in a structure fire, overhauling a fire, trying to find hidden fires in a, half a sheet of sheet rock falls on your head because of the water that you just put in the ceiling, injuries happen. Some of them are avoidable, but we wear as much protective equipment as we can to prevent it. Um, but quite frankly, those things do happen. Sprains, strains, knee injuries, neck injuries, elbow injuries, back injuries. If you would like to kinda tour one of the fire stations and put on all the equipment that we do, you'll put eighty thou- eighty pounds on your back and we'll climb you up the tower and and.
And then send you up the tower, that's right.
It'll put things into perspective for you.
Can we videotape that?
Wanna go down the fire pole?
Yeah, well, I'll like put a kibosh to that as well. So as we move on, this is what our adjusted daily staffing would be. So um, we wouldn't have the staffing to fund uh to staff man one of our, one of our stations. So our daily staffing would go from twenty-three to twenty. Personnel strength would look like this, so we had thirty full-time employees. We'd go to twenty-six per shift. So as you go across the the columns there, you'll see the math adds up to the twelve. The daily staffing would be twenty. Now with our um vacation spots off for firefighters, company officers and the shift commanders, now we're at a negative one. So that means every day we have to hire somebody as a, on a personnel shortage just to cover twenty staffed positions. Does that make sense to everybody? Some of these slides, I don't want them to be confusing. I mean, I live this stuff, so it's easy for me to understand and we use a lot of acronyms, so. So let's just talk about some call volume. So Station Ninety-two is located on Titan Drive, responds to the fewest calls, fewest EMS calls. Um, so they responded to twelve hundred and ninety-one incidents in twenty twenty-three and uh twelve hundred and eighty-five in twenty twenty-four. This is about eleven percent of the total calls for twenty twenty-four. Kinda put it in perspective. All across the board, about seventy-five percent of our calls are EMS calls. Now, in comparison, Station Ninety-One located downtown on North Front Street responded to almost three and a half times as many calls as Station Ninety-Two did in twenty twenty-four. It's a busy station. On top of that, we have to deal with this situation. The percentage of duplicate calls that happen while we're on one call and we get dispatched to another in our zone, Station Ninety-One, twenty-seven percent of the time that happens. So we staff that station accordingly and that's why. If you look at a heat map where all the calls are at, if we didn't, another station's coming to town and and handling that situation. Ninety-three and ninety-five, ninety-three is on Fortieth and Inglewood, the one with the the grass that's nice and yellow because we're gonna rip it up. Ninety-five's on Knob Hill are almost about the same as they get duplicate calls in the twenty percent range. Ninety-two, ninety-four, you can see the rest of them. Ninety-six is the slowest station, but it's not our station, it's Union Gap Station, but we staff it. But on top of that, we get to use Union Gap's resources however we want throughout the city. So don't let that be a determinant as to. the city. So don't let that be a determinant as to, you know, the usefulness of apparatus and personnel responding out of Union Gap station. I have a full authority to deploy them however the needs are within the city, throughout the day, 365 days a week.
That answers my question, but I was going to ask what happens if we give them their station back and let them be responsible?
Well, we'd lose another company essentially to respond. So these are where your stations are located. The shaded areas are their response zones. And you, as you can see, they're right in the center of all their response zones, and that's by design because of response times. This map here is courtesy of our GIS department, and it shows, just focus on the three stations, 92, 93, and 94, that are surrounded by green areas, because I didn't ask them to do any of the other stations as far as their response times. So as you can see, the green areas, you know, you have one to two minutes, two to three minutes and stuff like that. The farther you go out into the blues, you're getting into that response time that's four to, five to six minutes, seven to eight minutes. So why are response times important? So this is why they're important. Besides the fact that we adopted a standard that says that we will have a performance measure that will respond to these calls at a certain length of time. Fire department response times are critical impact on fire growth and severity. And so the longer it takes for firefighters to arrive, the more time the fire has to intensify, spread, and cause damage. And here's how the time for a fire kind of plays out. I have a slide for that. So if a firefighter and their company can get there within two to four minutes during this window, they can oftentimes contain the fire during the growth stage. Fire grows exponentially every minute before flashover occurs. This significantly reduces the property damage and increases the chance of survival, which is the key part for the occupants, if there are any in this building. After five minutes, fires in modern buildings can reach flashover. So what is flashover? Believe it or not, everything in the room ignites simultaneously because it reaches its ignition temperature and the whole house or the whole room is on fire. At this point, conditions are far more dangerous for both the occupants and the firefighters. Anything beyond eight to 10 minutes, the fire may spread from the original room of origin throughout the building for the risk of structural collapse and/or making it almost impossible to, you know, access the building from the interior side. This slide here illustrates the impacts of Station 92 not being staffed. All the blue, light purple, and the other purple were in the response ranges anywhere between nine to 10 minutes, eight to nine minutes. This is the timeline that I was talking about for fire spread. Anywhere between three to five minutes, the, everything, all the contents inside a building without going and check will reach a flashover and ignite everything.
Hey Chief, is there a way, I mean, as you were talking about the West Valley Fire Station, you know, possible, potentially, you know, the impact to that station, is there a reason why we don't talk about just letting Union Gap have their fire station back? And that, that becomes not our problem anymore?
It does become our problem because now I have to make up $2 million of revenue that Union Gap is paying for the fire protection service. And so just add that into the 1.7, now we're at.
But there's a cost factor to keeping, I mean, we're, we're providing firefighters, are we not, to Union Gap?
Yes, we are.
Right. So that cost of those employees would now just be their cost and not our cost, and we're out of that game for Union Gap. That would save that money in staffing, correct?
There would be a net difference, yes, there would. I don't know exactly tonight what that net difference would be. But if the 12 firefighters were still employed and stationed out of Station 92, then the cost would be relatively the same. And other than, they own their fire apparatus and, and their station, so we wouldn't have to worry about paying for the fuel in those. But with their apparatus and their station, there are no costs to us. They're, they're in charge of maintaining them and all the costs that is incurred with that part.
Right. But you just said 80% of our, our, our costs are labor, which is, you know, as I'm looking at it from a labor perspective and overtime perspective, I'm going, you know, let's let Union Gap do Union Gap, and let's keep our fire stations open across our city. That would be my, my only thought is, you know, cuts the cost down for us not having a labor of that aspect, and Union Gap can pay for those things.
I understand your question. I just don't think the net savings is going to be anywhere near $1.7 million.
Can, can I mention, so basically, Union Gap is, is reimbursing us for their cost. And the Chief and I are working to, to basically make that so it's whatever our cost is, they will pay for that, that fee. And I think they've been, you've been doing this for quite a few years. We're going to go through and do a cost analysis so we know what that is. And then that will be when we look to Union Gap, that will be where we will want to, you know, to, to, to get to in terms of cost reimbursement. So I think that the question is, or I think what, what, what I think we're hearing is, is, oh, well, if we cut Union Gaps, we would cut that cost, and we would. But we would also cut the revenue that's paying for that right now as well. So we would, for the most part, be net zero, because that's where, where we want to be. So we would still be $1.7 million short and still be looking to cut another station. And, and I think that's what we're really saying is, then you'd, you'd actually lose two stations instead of one.
Potentially, because I don't think the net savings would be enough to adequately staff another station. So the last slide I'd like to show you is.
I would like to look into that more. Thank you.
Okay. So the last slide I wanted to show you is, we talked about fire a little bit. We also respond to a lot of EMS calls. So the importance of response times as it referred to EMS calls is really on initiating CPR for a cardiac patient. And so the little bar graph on the left side of the slide shows you that if nobody begins CPR and we don't do CPR on a patient and stuff like that, the chances of survival dramatically decline every minute. The chances of survival on the bar graph on the right-hand side dramatically increase when we can get there between four to six minutes, begin CPR, AED if needed, and chances of survival could be anywhere between 80 to 76%. So it's part of our mission for protecting property, saving lives. So response times matter. So I guess in closing, I just wanted to make sure that. So what does this all mean? I know we talked about a lot of stuff. So as I stated earlier, the reductions to the fire department budget to this magnitude could only be accomplished by a reduction in force. This reduction would not allow us to adequately staff our stations as they currently exist, which result in increased response times, not only to the 92 response area, but also in zones for those stations that would be covering that current Station 92's area. So is it my recommendation to close our fire station? Absolutely not. I mean, what we should be looking at is where we should be building the next fire station. There's so much community development that's happened south of the city limits or in the southern portion of the city limits. And looking at our map, that is the area that has the least amount of coverage right now, where there's no fire station. So keep that in mind. Appreciate your time. Appreciate the questions. Sorry it took so long to get through some of those slides, but you're welcome anytime if you want to come by and see firsthand what we deal with on a daily basis as far as our staffing model throughout the day. So, thank you.
Hey Chief, is there any way on the EMS calls that are received, is there any way to utilize more of the county, county response to those versus, you know, I mean, 70, 70-plus percent of our, our calls are going towards EMS calls? Is there, is there not a way to, you know, streamline that a little bit and utilize the county's costs that they're paying for, you know, EMS services?
The county, Yakima County doesn't have an emergency response for EMS calls. I don't know how they would assist in that. I mean, the only revenue, not the only revenue, a significant revenue that we receive as a pass-through through the county is the EMS levy funds. We receive the most. And, you know, as you look at the assessed valuation and what that tax value is per thousand, we're like about 90% of what we actually collected if we, if we ran our own, like levy. So there's not a department in the county that could absorb this for us. And we don't even go to all the EMS calls that happen within the city limits of Yakima on a daily basis. There's prob, there are thousands of calls that we don't go to that AMR ambulance does go to as a contract agency for Yakima County.
Well, that's what I'm asking. So if there's thousands of calls that AMR is going to, why don't we just send AMR more?
More?
I'm just looking at a cost perspective. If we're already using them to send.
They don't have enough ambulances to go to calls now. I could, I was looking at calls today that we went on that the nearest ambulance was coming out of Tappanish. No fault to theirs because they're staffing as best they can to meet their contract obligations to response times to Zone One, which is the city of Yakima, 90% of the time. But there are times when there's system saturation, is what it's called, that there are so many calls that occur that it wouldn't matter if they staffed 20 ambulances, we wouldn't have enough for this particular day. It happens. So we can't give them more calls to respond on. We're responding to the ones that we can do the most benefit to in the quickest amount of time to have a positive outcome to the residents that we respond to. How long you want to wait for an ambulance to show up, I guess is the big question. If you're willing to wait that long, they could go on more calls. We're not really to put that decreased level of service to our residents here in Yakima.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Welcome to FOIA.
Good evening, Mayor and its councilmen. You're the people that chose to come and are tuning in by Zoom or watching us on TV. I have a smaller slide deck, but I could probably talk a lot more than the Chief can. So I plan on talking for a while and showing the positives that our police department does on a daily basis. And I'd just like to start by saying the majority of any issue or reductions within our organization are going to affect three primary things. It's going to be traffic enforcement, nuisance-related calls, especially to the homeless, et cetera, and then property crimes. That's where the biggest reduction would be. And I think those are the biggest drivers of calls to the, to the council, to our police department, Yakpax, et cetera. So that's, we'll work our way through. And the other part I want to illustrate is how our police department has essentially been, our city continues to grow. And as we, we have been defunded over the years, potentially 10 positions and probably another 12 if this was to go through of commissioned police officers. And then another, I think it's 10 staff, or I have the number, I apologize, is 21 total employees. But I think it's nine non-commissioned staff. And they all play an essential role. And it's, and I'll also talk at the end a little bit about system. The criminal justice system is not just the police department. It's the court system, the prosecutors, the defense attorneys, incarceration costs, those are all on the rise. We also have a recent Supreme Court ruling that defense attorneys are going to cost a lot more. They have a reduced caseload, which is going to cost municipalities and counties a lot more as we go forward. So we'll start with the numbers of the city. Next, and right. Oh, I was, I gave a presentation at AWC and Rick Glenn and the Vicky Baker tells I'm not good with a controller, so I apologize in advance. We use the Census Bureau numbers to show our tracking from 2010 to 2000 projected through 2026. And in 2010, we had 91,000 residents. And in 2026, we're projected to have 97,000. But the OFM, the Office of Financial Management, has the numbers over 100,000 projected for 2026. So as you look at the comparison of officers per thousand that we're servicing on a daily basis, it's actually going to be lower than that. But we were unable to find the 2010 numbers, so we wanted consistent data throughout our presentation. This is a comparison of the, the population as it relates to the officers per thousand. And you see it's continually trending downward. Nationwide, it's 2.4 officers per thousand. The Washington State has the lowest of all 50 states, including the District of Columbia, at 1.31. And if the cuts were to go through, we'd have 1.25, which is going to be even lower than the Washington State average. And as many know, we have a significant, significant amount of calls for service and crime that occurs in our community. And with less police, you're just going to have the inability to effectively police that. This is a multi-year analysis of the per thousand versus calls for service. And you see a big number jump from the 2010. We changed records management system, so we're unable to go back and how we counted calls for service. But in 2015, we had 83,000, and we're projected to be at 93,000, over 93,000 in 2025 or 26. And what that is, is calls for service where police, people call asking for help from the community. And that's about 53,000 to 55,000 per year. And the other, the remainder of that is officer initiation, where they're outgoing to impractical efforts. And that includes contacting homeless, traffic stops, going out and make a search warrants, et cetera. So as you see, in 2010, we're at 1.63 officers per thousand. And then significantly, or continually, we have dropped. As the population has gone up, our force has reduced. And now we're projected would be in 2026, 1.25 officers per thousand. Another thing with that is, looking back at the, the history of the budget cycle, 2018, 19, five positions were defunded. 2022, under a different, mostly different council and different city manager, five positions were unfunded and were supposed to be used to buy fleet vehicles. That money was never seen by the police fleet or put into buying vehicles. So that's equivalent of $3 million in vehicles that we never saw and had the ability to purchase. So that put us behind. We graciously were awarded the money through, through other means to be able to reboot our fleet. As cars age, it costs more in maintenance and the ability to, the fuel goes down, costs go through the roof. A lot of cars stay under warranty longer than when you have a fleet that's being, being replaced at a, at a normal cycle. 2025, a position was removed. And then in 2026, like we said, the five positions, the unfunded positions for the fleet would be removed, and then 12 more would be removed from our budget, leaving us going from about a high of 147 down to 25. So effectively, we would have lost 22 positions over the last 2018, 2019 budget cycle to 2026. So. And with that, in addition to, right now, we operate usually at about seven to eight vacancies, but we usually have about a 77 to 80% of officers that actually go and do police work, from myself on down to the youngest that just got released from the field training program. We have 17 people, or 17 or 18 people in a training cycle that cannot work, do police work. And then you have about anywhere from two to 10 that are either injured on family leave, long-term, et cetera, you know, bonding for, or people that are having children, they are gone from our, our number. So when we look at, we have, say, we have 130 people that are actually on our roster that we publish. Usually, we're operating right in the ballpark of about 103 to 107 police officers that can do the job daily. And that's, that's because we've done a significant amount of hiring. But that's a year-long process to be able to get that person to be able to work on the streets. So. An additional cost that's coming with that, we were just informed that we're now going to have to start paying a quarter of our academy. When a police officer goes to an academy, it was, used to be about $7,500. And then for two years, the legislature paid for that, and they just took that away from us. So that's going to be an incurred cost to our, one of the, one of the ideas was to reduce training budget. But if we were to hire seven people next year, we're talking upwards of $80,000 to $90,000 just to train them out of our training budget, which we were not planning, obviously, because the legislature had been paying for that. We're going to spend a lot of time on this slide, and this is going to be the impacts of what that looks like reduced for service to each of the people in the community that where it's going to be most impacted. The, the survey spoke about reducing or completely eliminating units. And what I want to write, I change it to reduce eliminate, because some of these units just cannot be eliminated. There's, there's work that has to be done by them, but it will be greatly reduced to where their effectiveness to be able to do follow-ups, et cetera, is going, would be almost nil or none. I'll start with property crimes. And again, that's one of the biggest, probably impacts the most people in our community on a daily basis, besides traffic enforcement. They investigate things such as burglary, thefts, embezzlements, liaison with the prosecutor's office for discovery. They follow up on video evidence and other leads. They follow up on video evidence and other leads. And they're not, they're not the initial responders that go out and take the reports. What you would see eventually would be a reduction probably to one or two people that would work solely with the prosecutor's office. So when a police officer makes an arrest on a felony crime in this field, they would do the discovery. And what that is, is gathering reports, making sure they're all complete, video evidence that needs to be provided to the prosecutor, prosecutor for an effective prosecution. If that person, that's where we talk about, you cannot completely eliminate property crimes, but the ability to follow up in the, in the future is going to be drastically, they wouldn't be able to do that. That's a full-time job, just liaison with the prosecutor's office. So, and the, the big question is, we're encouraging people to put cameras out, turn in video, provide us with the ability to identify the people that are committing these crimes. There's not going to be with the, now, the way the system works is usually the patrol officer, especially a midnight graveyard officer, collects a lot of the evidence, it's forwarded to our detectives in the property division. They review the video evidence, and then they do the follow-up during the day, and have the ability to go out and contact witnesses, victims, et cetera. With them not being able, the initial responding police officer would be the one that would do the start to finish on the, on the investigation. And then if they got to the point where they had no more leads, that case would basically be deadline, and there'd be no more, no further investigation. An embezzlement crime, we see it often where businesses, they have an employee or someone similar that will choose to steal or take money out of their accounts. And upwards of six hundred thousand, there's a million dollar loss in our city this year. Those crimes are months-long investigations, including multiple search warrants, which patrol officers just don't have the time. Like I said earlier, they're responding to fifty, fifty to fifty-five thousand calls for service. And if you're asking why the patrol officer doesn't have the ability, our minimum staffing on patrol is eight police officers on day shift with a supervisor, eight on swing shift with a supervisor, and then from eight-twenty at night to two-forty in the morning, there's fourteen total with two supervisors. And after two-forty in the morning, there's only six police officers and one supervisor. One major critical incident basically drains all the, all the resources for the entire city. So we rely upon, and we have great relationships throughout our, our valley with the state troopers, the county, union gap, et cetera. They come to help us, like we go and help them. But without that, we don't, we wouldn't be able to provide services a lot of times within the community. So like I said, property crimes is, is probably the number one crime that people, impacts the majority of our community and our ability to do follow-up. And with that is, you know, the economic development, businesses are unlikely to want to move here if we don't have the ability to stop crime that comes to their business and, or move to another community where it's able to better provide police services. The gang unit, they work closely with the federal prosecutor's office and the alcohol, tobacco, and firearms. We actually work on a task force with them. They triage cases to see where the, where the prosecution is better. We've greatly increased our federal prosecutions for gang members involved in gangs and drug dealing, drug possession, firearm possession. And without that liaison and the detectives that can do that paperwork to file in federal court, you'll see a significant reduction in that, in that, those federal prosecutions. They work with the Walkabout Yakima, the school district, probation, parole, awareness presentations, and a multitude of other local communities to help keep kids from getting into gangs. So you're also not only on the enforcement aspect of that, you're going to see the ability to keep some kids from choosing a gang lifestyle reduced. Long-term investigations, they did one last year that, I think there was forty indictments stemmed from it, and it's all across eastern Washington. But our gang unit was a heavy, heavily involved in this investigation, which significantly disrupted the Norteno gang members in our area. They do a lot of drug trafficking, the recruitment of young persons into gang violence and intimidation. And so the, obviously, with the reduction of our, or elimination of our gang unit, you're going to lose those resources and the ability to potentially curb some young man or woman from joining a gang. Narcotics unit, they're assigned to work almost exclusively with the Drug Enforcement Agency. They also triage our cases and forward that onto the, to the state crime lab for the evidence processing. We, as I think it was mentioned, at least one of the public comments, we have an enormous problem with fentanyl and other drugs in our community. These officers are assigned to long-term drug trafficking investigations, which, which, which brings a lot of drugs to our community, not just our own community, but throughout the Northwest. But without someone stopping, or these officers working to curb the, the flow of drugs in our community, you'd see an explosion in drug crimes. Not only, which would obviously increase the amount of users that we have in our community. With the increase in drug use comes a decrease in property crime, violence, robberies, intimidation, et cetera. And obviously, they're, they're the, they're the front lines of the epidemic for our agency. They also have a significant amount of federal funding, and they, a lot of seizures that come along with this, and they, they can almost pay for themselves through the hard work and dedication of these officers that are assigned to it. Crime analysis, they report our neighbors to the, the federal partners. Whenever, and I know that there's a lot of asks of this council, they are the ones that are the ones that gather the information. They, they do all of our, they do our information gathering for grant applications. Whenever somebody wants a report, then we ask them. Most importantly, they're working on data-driven investigation or data-driven policing, so we know where to put our resources. They're evaluating what crimes are occurring, their, their ability to help us allocate where our resources need to be in the community. Talk about they, they're instrumental in our abatement process. So without their information that they're gathering, they work in conjunction with the crime for rental housing. But that, but their, the statistics are enormously important for an agency and for us to know how to use our, our people effectively. And without their, their input, it would be significantly reduced. The traffic unit, we can all go back, and I think you, everybody on this council sees in presentations what happens when you reduce your traffic unit. Twenty nineteen, we went down to one detective that was, or one traffic officer, it was basically investigating fatal crime or collisions. Serious injury and fatal crashes. We saw a spike from three to four fatal incidents a year to upwards of ten to eleven per year in our city. So they provide enforcement, they, obviously, they investigate your serious injury and fatal crashes, but they provide proactive traffic enforcement. They, areas that are impacted within our community, they respond to requests from the community for where there's traffic issues that are going on. And then, like I said, traffic, along with property crimes and nuisance-related issues are our three main things that people contact the community or the, the council and, and us on a regular basis. So you would see potentially more dangerous driving in our community, the inability to work with trap streets, because they work closely with streets. I know we've had a couple of areas in our city, and I can think of Forty-Eighth Avenue in Washington and Eighteenth Avenue and Pacific, or Eighteenth Street in Pacific, where they worked with the traffic division to work on some engineering, education, and enforcement of the three E's of traffic enforcement. And they worked closely with the engineering department to make some road, some fixes to the roads, and we've seen a reduction in serious injury collisions there. So as Scott said, the streets is a, is a traffic safety component in this also. And then, like I said, I already spoke about a history of our, cutting our traffic unit, and you saw what that did. I mean, we could all see what that did, and we saw, see very good results. Unfortunately, the last week, if anybody's seen, they've been very busy. And I wish I had an answer to why that is. We're trying to dissect why that is, but we had, in one day, we had four serious injury crashes and, but without someone else, we can see days where that could become more of the norm rather than the ability to curb that. Animal control and parking, those are all non-commissioned positions, but they address almost all of the Yakback that come to our police department. So they're addressing the quality of life issues, abandoned vehicles, Hulk vehicles, vicious animals. So they, they're not just working, they do parking enforcement downtown, but they're a lot of what the work is, is community-generated, either through the Yakbacks, calls in, calls for service. And without them, you would have no animal control. You would have dogs that we, the police officers aren't equipped to humanely deal with a lot of vicious dog. I'll just, that's the easiest way I can put it, probably the most generic way of putting that. But you would see a significant delay in Yakback complaints. The other part of that is, if people don't have the Yakback or an ability to reach out in a different manner, they're going to flood the nine-one-one system. Because it's all, and I'll talk about it at the end, but it all comes back to, people are going to call nine-one-one when they don't have another avenue to do that, which is going to create workload for the, the communication center and then police officers. And then you're going to have police officers taking on the role of what, we're trying to get them back to doing, enforcing crimes and investigating crimes, but yet they're going to be tasked with a lot of the quality of life issues that, that we're trying to get them out of doing. So. Crime for rental housing, this is a position, and I know that it shows up as a ninety-eight thousand dollar savings, but that's that employee. And I did some research for this, and that employee does eleven total tasks on a daily basis, for the most part, at least weekly. So that is one of the eleven things that that person does. So if you were to cut that position or that program, you're cutting a body that is, or an employee who does ten other duties on a daily basis. So they would be stuck. Those ten duties get divided up amongst the people that are, remain working. So already, an overlapped services division, or overworked services division is going to take on ten additional duties between, between them. In addition, that helped, we've needed to help abate properties. They work closely with the prosecutor's office codes and our police department. We are in the process of abating one property, and a lot of the information that was gathered from there came from the crime for rental housing, our analysts, and then one of the, one of the prosecutors, which would be reassigned to, because it would be cut through, the, the funding would impact that person's ability to work directly with us. Last slide, and it's, it doesn't have much on it, but I think I want to talk about a few things here. Number one, the criminal justice system, and it's not just the police department. I talked about that earlier, and I'd like to kind of press to that point that there's impacts to the courts, there's impacts to the, the city legal. I know I've spoken to them. One of the cuts is their front counter person. They would lose one legal assistant that works at the front. And I asked again, and it's coincidental, they have eleven duties. When I asked, when I asked Cynthia Martinez and Sarah Watkins to send a list of what they do, they have eleven duties too. They don't just, I think when I think of the legal assistant at the front counter, I think of that's a person that sits there. People come in, they call Sarah, or they call Cynthia, and they, they have them walk back there. But they include triaging cases, entering cases, making, pushing through defense motions, making sure an effective prosecutor has effective aides. And those people, that position has taken on a lot of what probably isn't in the job description. I don't want to speak on that, because I don't, we'll just say that they're doing a lot more work than they probably anticipated coming to work as a front, a legal assistant at the front counter. And I don't, I don't want to speak on behalf of that, but I know I've had some conversations about that. If you cut one of those out, if you don't fund adequately fund the ability to incarcerate somebody, we don't hold them accountable. If you cut the prosecutors out, we don't, we can, you could fully fund the police department, but if you don't fund the prosecutors and the other portions of this, we could arrest ten thousand people in a year, and if they can only prosecute two thousand, there's eight thousand people that don't get charges filed. So I just ask you to remember that when you're thinking of cuts in the criminal justice system. All departments complement each other. I think Scott talked about it. Unfortunately, we saw the tragedy out of Idaho where, you know, law enforcement is, is, needs to be there for the fire service. And so I think that parks and rec, I mean, although it's not a public safety thing, we talk about what can kids do that are not just a part of, not just a part of, we don't, we want to keep them out of the criminal justice system. And the ways to do that are, are, are other programs that eliminate, that eliminate their ability to have idle time and be recruited by other people that do, I mean, we're all kids, and we all had idle time, and it doesn't, you find things to do, and a lot of it's not productive. So we previously have lost ten positions at the police department, eleven prior to this. And you can call it unfunding, defunding, cuts. But, I mean, I think that the hot button word is defunding, but ultimately, that's what we're doing. We're defunding the criminal justice system if we don't adequately provide resources to the, not just the police department, but we're defunding our city and the ability to be a, a place where people want to live, work, and visit. And so the agency would have to focus on specific issues and not have the ability, and some would just be, to be left to either delayed or just not do at all. And so nuisance-related, traffic, and property would be probably the biggest impacted, and all of those are community-generated for the most part. We'd have to, obviously, like I said, delay in issues, and then, again, since two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen budget cycle, if all these cuts were to go through, we would have lost twenty-two positions, but yet, yet gained, you know, several thousand people in our community. As we look to expand, and we're looking at annexing other areas, you're going to ask the men and women of the police department to do more with less. So I just, the Yakima Police Department is made up of dedicated, hard-working staff throughout all divisions. Each of the division services, corrections, and the commission staff work together tirelessly to make our community safer. They have done it through all, through all the staffing shortages and turmoil and policing throughout the last few years. We have an incredible community to support and have built momentum to make our city a safer place to live, work, and visit. I'm asking for our agency to be adequately staffed and supported. The men and women who place their lives on the line each day deserve our community. And ultimately, they're going to do their job. I have no doubt that they're going to do it professionally and do everything they can to make our city, our safer, but adequately staffing us will allow us the ability to really make a difference and really help the economic development that the city manager and assistant manager is thinking of and making our safe, a place that people want to come live and work and visit. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions for Chief.
I was really impressed with that fellow that testified earlier today, talking about programs that you're doing to get youth involved, to help them stay out of trouble. I wasn't aware that was happening. Can you expand on that a little more?
Yes, Mr. Parks came to us earlier, and, and he wants to, a lot of the kids that are living in the inner city or the east side of town, they don't have a lot of interaction with police except for negative. So what we've done is worked with OIC to, to get students to come to our, our department, and they get kind of a little, they get to speak to the officers, but we give them a little class on different things. And one of the things he wants to work on is, you know, what do you do on a traffic stop? What do you do when the police talk to you in the field? And it was something that Mr. Parks brought to us along with OIC, and we've seen, gradually seen that get bigger. And so we try to meet once a month, and then our group has gone from two to, I think we had over thirty at the last one. So it's, it's a very good program, and, and it's getting to see that, you know, the police are not someone that you can interact with, and seeing us on a human being, we all have, we're all part of this community, we all live here. And I think, if I could quote you, Rick, could I say what you said at dinner? Is it okay?
You bet.
He said that we've got people in the key places, and now we need to support them. And I think that's important. And I think you said it earlier, so I don't, I don't think I'm, we can have to rerun the tape, I didn't say it exactly how you did, but I think that's what we're asking for is, is give us an opportunity to generate revenue in other, in other, in other fashions, community development, economic development, and I think our city making a safe place to live and work. And, you know, it's all, it's all intertwined. It's not just law enforcement, but it's also the, it's also, not just the criminal justice system, but it's all intertwined. And I think that's when it comes to adequately funding our entire city. So. Any other questions?
Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you, Chief. Great. Thank you.
Is this where I can make a motion, or do I need to keep going?
Let's see.
Craig is going to finish. He's got one last. He's having issues with the slide.
I did, but it wasn't there. We're going to go through a few of these. I didn't see it on the very bottom. Yeah. So let me bring it up here from what I have here. So council overall, so we've, as, as we mentioned earlier, one of the things that we really need from the council is the direction you want us to go. And we have talked about cuts, we've talked about revenue, and in the end, I just wanted to, the last slide really was this, and it, and what it really boils down to is it shows four different types of revenue options for the council if you were to consider a revenue Two of them are voter approval, one is the property tax. And, you know, for base, basically, for all intents and purpose, we tried to make it easier to, to kind of remember. Five cents per thousand generates about six hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue overall. The EMS levy, which is also voter approval, you can go up to twenty-five cents. That twenty-five cents generates about two point nine million dollars. The only difference is the, the EMS levy is really specifically for fire. The other thing is, is that requires a sixty percent supermajority pass. And then there's also two city council opportunities. One is a sales tax that's out there for law and justice and, and actually, public safety. It generates, it's a tenth of a cent, and it generates about two point seven million dollars. And the other one is utility tax, and each one percent generates about five hundred thousand dollars. So, so just to kind of keep those in mind, wanted to kind of re-put those back in the, in the council's forefront for you to remember. The other thing that I-
Let me clarify, please, if I may.
Yes.
Utility tax, even though we can use that, that's an enterprise fund, so it really Utility tax, even though we can use that, that's an enterprise fund, so it really has to stay back in that realm, doesn't it only go into the general fund?
Not on the utility tax. That actually is something that comes to the general fund.
Okay.
Yep. The actual utility fees have to go into the enterprise. The utility tax can can go to the general fund. So the other thing that I also tried to do, and I tried to give you a worksheet here, is property tax, because we've talked so much about, well, what amount would we would we potentially look at? So it basically down the left column, there's a it says levy increase, and it starts at a nickel and goes up five cents to 10 cents, 15, 20. It tells you the the next column is the amount of money generated. The next column is what the average home value, which right now is 356,000, what that would mean per month. And then we tried to say, but we know there's other homes that are more than that, so we did one with a $600,000 average or not average, but a $600,000 home approximately. So that's the information that we have, and
We're just looking for a direct
Oh, it came up. Randy is a miracle worker.
We're done there. Thank you. So counsel, this is the point where we start our discussions on what direction we'd like to give staff. And I'd like to share a few thoughts. As all of us have, this has been turning over and over and over in my mind. The first thought when I I talked with you was, who likes tax, right? I don't none of us do.
Mayor, can you can you talk on your microphone? Sorry.
It's on it's on?
Yeah.
Okay, it's on. Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's better.
I had the mic move away, and we went up a little bit. So I don't think there's anybody in the city of Yakima tell me they like tax, so I think we're all in agreement there. If if we don't do some tax, any tax, then we have serious cuts in front of us, you know, anywhere from, you know, zero to $9 million worth of cuts. So we have to come to some decision as a council. I thought about this for this whole last week. My thought was, gosh, we're asking the citizens to do something. And if we're asking them to do something, we should be willing to do something. So I lined that a couple of ideas on amounts and what it would be to to have a $6 million tax or a $7.5 million tax and and then do cuts, which is a possibility. We can look at that. Because I felt like, gosh, it's hard to ask our citizens to do something and not not be willing to do something as well. But those things we would choose to do would also take away from our citizens. One of the things I know just from years of observing the council and then coming on the council is that our staff, I truly believe this, our staff is lean and mean. We've gone through a series of 10% cuts. A lot of those have been staff, and and the amount of work that our city does, the amount of services we provide on the amount of staff we have compared to other cities is astronomical. I think our citizens should be not only aware of that, but proud of that, and as well as our city staff. So my leaning at this point, I'm I'm not putting out a motion about my leaning at this point, is having people understand what it means if we begin to cut services, I think, may inspire them to to want to go ahead and do a $9 million property tax. Because as I listen to the services that we would lose tonight, potentially lose, I can't imagine taking those things away from our our citizens. Now, ultimately, they're going to have the choice, because it's going to go to the voters, and they can tell us no. And then we will have to come out and make, you know, some forced cuts. But I just think, why would we want to put that kind of detriment in the operation of the city when we are also trying to work on economic development? Because if we take away from what's being done, we'll have less to move forward with, and that's very concerning to me. One of the things that our city manager said, and I totally agree with this, is that we'll never tax our way out of this situation. We will grow our way out of this situation, but in order to grow our way out, we have to have, right, all the services that our city has. We are a full-service city. You can go to a lot of cities, and they don't provide the services that we do. We're a full-service city. We provide everything we can to our constituents. So it's a difficult situation for all of us. That's kind of what I'm thinking.
I agree. And, you know, if you just listen to everybody who spoke today, the people in the audience and also the people on staff, it's very clear what we would be losing. And it's also very clear that it wouldn't be a pleasant place to live, and we wouldn't be able to do any economic development. So.
If we lose qual if we lose public safety, that's going to deter businesses and people wanting to come into our community. But also, if we lose quality of life issues, it is going to have the same detrimental effect that and the five things that most companies or industries look at in a community coming in, one of those five is quality of life. And so if we have to, we have to start taking away from that, we're going to have less to offer and certainly less to offer in public safety, so.
Quality of life also, though, means low taxes, to be honest with you. Can I can I say something on this?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I mean, from what I've heard, you know, from citizens out in West Valley, the message has been pretty clear that they they are fed up with taxes that squeeze hardworking families and businesses. And I get it, we're facing a $9 million budget deficit. So I I would personally support a fair 50-50 plan, a 4.5 million in city cuts and streamlining matched by 4.5 million in in the ways of 1.8 million in parks levy and a .1 sales tax for public safety. And the reason for this is pretty clear in my mind. Yakima's poverty rate is 17%. It's 6% higher than the national average. We have a median house income of 59,000. 20% of our community currently are facing housing problems. Property taxes in Yakima County already make up almost 4% of your annual income in this community. Washington's homeless crisis in the last this just this year's has pushed us up into the top five, with now 31,000 unhoused nightly in 2024. Families in our parks, folks along our greenway, more property taxes beyond the parks levy could push our community towards towards the streets and our breaking point. That's why I can't I can't back that. Here's the other aspect of that. Our farmers, shopkeepers, restaurateurs, and small business owners are crushed by the state currently, the state tag tax hack hikes that have happened, like the business and occupation tax increases. They've told me they fear losing their businesses or homes. More property taxes will hit them twice. As entrepreneurs and homeowners, the citizens of Yakima deserve a city that backs the businesses driving our economy, not the ones not one that taxes you further. So in my mind, the budget shows an estimated right now, when I was looking at it today, was that we have currently nine 900 full-time staff or FTEs equivalent with an average compensation of $120,000. If you factor some of that in, that includes benefits, that's almost double the household median income in our city. That's also citizens at home are earning in an agriculture job, maybe 60,000 median, retail 40,000, or healthcare support 42,000. So from their perspective, it's unfair to pay for more taxes. They're getting nickel and dimed from every aspect, from state, from federal, and now local, and it's and it's hurting them. And and that and that's ultimately going to hurt us longer term when we start talking about people moving out of this community and and just out of Washington State in general because of the taxes that are coming. So that's why I'm proposing this 50-50 plan. Now, whether that is in agreement with the majority of the council, I understand I'm probably not in the majority in this aspect, but I'm proposing it. It's just maddening that it's maddening to the people that government is consistently slamming their residents by taxes. That's frustrating. It's it's frustrating from I mean, I talked to a mom today that is a single mom that works four jobs and has five kids, and she's like, I can't I don't I don't know how to put on another job to pay for more taxes. It it's not physically possible for me. So I get it, this is a tough time, and I, you know, I'm look, I've we've listened to budget budget presentations out the yin yang over, you know, probably up to hundreds of hours now in regards to the same presentation. I just think there needs to be, you know, in my opinion, a 50-50 thought process on this so that, you know, and I get it, four and a half million in cuts or streamlining seems like an impossible task. But we've also, as a council, have faced these impossible tasks without having to do tax increases as a last resort in in prior years. And I and I think there could be some other options. One of those options that hasn't really been talked about, but is something that I recently were was digging into. So our utility taxes, obviously, not talking about the stormwater, wastewater, or those ones, but I'm talking more about the electricity, natural gas, and cell phones or telephones. Those three property taxes or sorry, utility taxes are capped at at the state level at 6%. However, there is a method for people for us as a council to actually go to the voter to ask for increases in those. Most recently, Tacoma did it, and they asked for a one and a half percent increase on telephone telephones. And and those would generate if we did on electricity, gas, and cell phones, if we just did a one and a half to 2%, you're talking an extra two to $3 million, $2 million in a very different form that everyone ends up paying, not just the homeowners who are trying to flip the bill. So that that would be my thought. Now, you could take that to a voter, but you can also, if you put in a referendum clause inside the ordinance, you can actually, we as a council can pass something like that. According to the RCW, they can protest it, they can make an ordinance about it, we make an ordinance about it, they can protest, do a referendum, and then we have to end up putting it to a ballot. So it would end up still going along those routes. However, I think there are other options. And then ultimately, the long-term option that I would like to discuss as well is a fire district and a fire authority, because I think that ultimately is going to solve a lot of our our budget issues, and we keep talking about it, and we just have to start kicking the ball so that we can get things going. So anyways, those are those are my thoughts.
Thank you. You and Nelson, counsel, want to jump over the bus?
As I was discussing this issue with people at the convention last week, one of the things that I didn't know before was that when that 1% cap was put in, it wasn't put in with the intention that it should always stay that way. It was just that any time that you wanted to go above that amount, you needed to have the opinion or the the approval of the voters. And so as as I started looking at that from that perspective, is, you know, and I look at the presentations tonight, and I don't want to decrease city park services, I don't want to decrease the police, I don't want to decrease any of these programs. And ultimately, it becomes an issue where you say, what are we going to to do as a city? One of the things that has kind of affected me, I'll have to admit, listening to Councilman Berg's wife today, that per that concept has been one that I've held most of my life, and and there comes a time where you have to say, well, if we want to get where we want to go, sometimes you've got to have enough faith to jump out on a limb and and do something. But I want to see Yakima become a more prosperous city, and I want to see us feel safe and have a good community. One of the things that affected my thinking on the issue is when we had the the county with their sales tax increase for radios, and I thought that would go down. That's going to be a slam dunk failure, and it passed by 70%. And I said, oh, am I really looking at this realistically? And then the other thing that made an impression on me was listening to the presentation of the people that we had review the budget and come back with their recommendations. And they were in favor of putting it to the voters and letting them decide, do we want to have a growing city and and keep supporting the programs we have, or do we want to downsize and and save some money? And so even though my philosophical interest is taxes need to be less, and I feel like the state is way too greedy, we need to find some ways to get them to be less greedy. But at the end of the day, I decided that what we're looking at is a situation where we need $9 million, and the reports that I've heard up to this point say that it's very likely it'll be higher than that at the end of the year, because revenues year to date are significantly lower. So I would like to move to direct staff to bring back a resolution to place a levy on the November 25 ballot that will result in an additional revenue of $10 million. That's a little higher than what we asked, but that would give us a cushion for the downfall that is imminent. And at the end of the day, I will let the voters decide, and and if they want to support it, they will.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Councilman Glenn and a second by Councilwoman D'Seo to direct staff to break a back resolution to place a levy on the November 2025 ballot that will result in a revenue of $10 million. Open for discussion.
Well, I agree with you, and I think that people will people want are willing to pay for the the services that they need and they want. And I think it's that's the best way to do it. And and one of the reasons that we're in this pickle right now is because we really haven't raised taxes in a long, long time. And we haven't we haven't raised fees or anything for people in a long, long time. So it's time to to do something about that.
Hold on.
Mr. Berg?
It's my turn, Rick.
Yes.
Uh, I agree with you on the fees, 100%. You know, if other cities or entities are using our services, we need to be charging them top dollar. I don't I don't think breaking even is the way to go. Same with the parks, if we can break even on the adult programs or whatever, I think we need to do that. I worry three things with the levy. I think there are long-term ramifications that haven't been mentioned. People on fixed incomes, what the hell are they going to do? I mean, they are going to get reamed, they only make so much money a year, and now we're asking them, hey, pay more, pay more. Patricia, you spoke about growing out of this. I don't think this will be business friendly at all, trying to recruit businesses coming in, hey, we're, you know, your property tax is going up, but we still want you to come in. So that worries me. And then I'm pretty worried about the housing market. Rick, you mentioned quite a bit, we're pricing people out of housing. This would be another long-term effect if if this goes through. Prices are going to go up, people will move out of here, go to cheaper areas. So those are those are the three things that kind of worry me if if we move forward with this.
I think one of the things that I've tried to focus on is
Excuse me, can I speak?
I'd like to see our our city government and our community become more united and and realize that we all are working together for the same end. We're on the same team. And yeah, I hate to spend more money, but at the same time, I think that everything that we're talking about are things that are important for the city of Yakima.
I'd Matt had something to say.
Go ahead, Councilman around.
Yeah, so I'm adamantly against $10 million in a new property tax. I mean, you're talking about just on a 358,000 assessed value home, you're talking $6, $700. You're talking way more to that of West Valley homes. You're talking, you know, probably eight to nine to maybe even $1,000 more in some of those homes a year, which is astronomical in some of these costs that they're already seeing from schools and other areas like that. It's actually kind of irresponsible, in my opinion, for us to not have to do any sort of taxes coming down, any sort of cuts, just to try to balance the budget. So that's why I'm adamantly a no against this. Also, Rick, I'm I'm trying to understand from a from a landlord's perspective, when you're capped at a rent control aspect, how the heck are landlords even going to be able to do any of this going forward? They're they're going to be basically priced out of their own homes that they own because they won't be able to raise costs to actually meet their aspects. And lastly, government does not know how to grow economic development. I just want you to understand, government only knows how to grow government, and and that is what this is. This is to keep government going. It's not economic development. It's not going to bring business. It's not going to do those things, because it it never has. When has increasing taxes ever done that? So and and so I say that because I I think $10 million is, again, we we are talking about a populist that 20% of the people in our community have housing problems that can't afford their own housing. But let's let's tax let's tax them right out of existence.
Yeah, I'd have to agree with with Matt on that. I mean, what what sucks about those property taxes is that the county assessors decided to raise the assessed value of homes a couple of years ago to where, you know, I have several mortgages, you know, they've gone up by $300, $400 a month because of these assessed values that the county has put out on these properties, and that everybody felt it. the county has put out on these properties, and everybody felt it. I mean, I had a property went from 140 up to 220 in one year. I mean, my mortgage comes like, oh, hey, your payment just changed, there you go.
Actually, insurance was a big deal in that.
That too, but I think it's the wrong time right now to ask property owners for a levy tax. They're already hurting already, as it is with the last, I say it's a bad timing for asking people for property taxes right now, and I don't think it's something that would actually pass, especially at $10 million. I mean, that's not, I don't think that's feasible for anybody. I know I don't want to vote for anything like that. I know there's other things we could do that aren't as effective to just the property owners, like for example, you know, the parks levy and, you know, the 10th percent tax to help pay for, you know, or...
Sales tax.
Yeah, the sales tax. And like I said, there's got to be some other, some other things we could look at to meet the halfway point and not put that full burden on property owners and their taxes.
Was your motion...
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Can we finish our discussion first, please? Because we have motion on the floor, we're still discussing it, I don't think you're ready.
I know, I'm making a motion to amend the motion, which is allowed under Roberts' rules and point of order.
Go ahead.
I'm going to move to amend the levy proposal from $10 million to 4.5 million.
I think it's failing by, like, a second.
Okay, then I'm going to move to amend a, down to 1.8 million as a parks levy.
Fails for lack of a second. Can we move on with our discussion, please? I think there's more to be said.
I do have a question. On your motion, was it just for property tax, or was it a combined, combined with other things?
Just property.
I just want one levy. I don't want to have multiple taxes. I want to keep it simple and say, this is a problem that we're going to try and address. We're in a situation where inflation has put us into this mess, and it's not, you know, inflation's not over yet, it's a mess, but how do we survive? We've got to find some way to keep going.
I'm going to say this, that one of the things mentioned is, you know, we've gone through this before, and it's always been okay. We've gone through this before, but it's resulted in a reduction of staff, which also reduces services to our city. So I think, I think also, Councilman Glenn mentioned, you know, we have to do things in faith. I think that faith is in the people. We have faith in the people in the city in terms of what they are willing to do or want to do, what services they want and don't want. And by putting something out, whatever we decide on, on the ballot, we have an obligation in serving the city to make the decision for the best thing we can do for the entire city. That's our role. We can put it out there, and then it's the role of the voters. It's the role of the voters to make that final decision and vote on it.
So I have a question.
Can I finish my comment, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, okay. And we have been greatly hindered in our ability to move forward with property tax since 2001. That's 24 years, you know, without the ability to really do that, since we've had one in the city, because nothing has passed. So I think that's one of the reasons we're considering this as an avenue. And while government, only grows government, as Deputy Mayor Brown has said, under the proper circumstances, the city can move toward economic development and help with that. And we actually have several things in the city we're moving forward on right now in that direction. But if we're reducing, if we're reducing income, reducing the services, we probably won't be able to move forward in all of those, which is concerning.
We stay at this level.
Yeah, and we stay at this level. So again, we have to ask ourselves, you know, and there's arguments on both sides, what are the voters willing to do? We won't know until we ask them, and because they're going to make the final decision. What do we ask them? That's what we're trying to come up with right now. I will say that I am not in agreement with $10 million, sorry, Mr. Glenn, not in agreement with that, but I'm not in agreement with a four and a half million either. I just don't think that's going to get us where we need to be.
I think maybe we could find something in between those two.
And actually, today in talking with, actually Craig about it all, but I think I came up with a number of $7.5 million, one levy, everything combined, 7.5, and I don't know what the final figures on that were. That would leave, that would leave approximately $2.5 million in cuts, or 6.5, $2.5 million, I think that was it, 6.5, six and a half, yeah, and two and a half million in cuts. And then we could, with the voters knowing that, that we are going to be making $2.5 million in cuts, how would they direct us to make those cuts? What services do they really feel that they are willing to or can do without?
I know Councilman Berg had a question, too.
Yes, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just for, because I'm sure we'll all be asked, when would these cuts realistically take place?
If council doesn't have action, we would probably start right away.
Okay, well, let's say this does go to a ballot, and then, so, because I'm sure we'll field phone calls coming.
It'll be January, wouldn't it?
January 1st.
Well, we could implement the difference. So if you are looking at a 7.5 or whatever number you settle on, the difference, we could begin implementation, just to slow the burn rate that we're experiencing in our reserves right now.
So that, what, two would be started right away, the 2 million?
Right, so we could do that by increasing fees across the board to make sure all the costs, and then additional costs are covered. For example, having county members using city services should pay more, and fees should be kind of normalized across the board by other cities as well. So there's things we can look at doing just by increasing income right away.
I know we have a motion on the table, but I would totally agree with you, Madam Mayor, with the 7.5 or around that.
Is that the motion you made?
I didn't really make a motion, that was just my conversation.
Oh, yeah, we have to amend that, or how do we do that?
I said, we just vote on it and then make a new motion?
Well, we would amend the current motion on the floor. That's what Deputy Mayor Brown was asking to do, the motions didn't move forward. We could have another motion to amend to whatever we decide.
So I like the numbers that you suggested. So I would move to direct staff to bring back a resolution to place a levy on the November 2025 budget that will result in revenue of, and whatever your numbers were, I don't remember the numbers.
I think it was 7.2.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
7.2 million dollars.
So if you want to amend it, it has to be a motion to amend, there's currently a motion on the table, so your options are, you can either have the vote on Councilmember Glenn's motion and then move on from there, or your motion can be to amend Councilmember Glenn's motion to change the numbers.
I meant to say that to begin with.
Perfect. And then there's a vote on the amendment itself, and then further discussion, and then vote on the amended.
So would you like to change the word on your motion to amend?
I would like to amend, yes.
So you would like to amend?
The motion that's on the table right now.
From $10 million to...
From $10 million to 7.2.
7.2 million, okay. And do we have a second on that motion? To amend? If there's no second, then the motion dies.
What is the rate? Craig, at 10 million or 7.2 million, what is the rate?
The, it would be an additional 60 cents for the 7.2 million.
Which, which would be, you said 60 cents, that would be $17.88 a month for the average home, $356,000, or $30 a month for a $600,000 home.
Yep.
I think you have 10 million figures.
I did. 10 million would be 300, it would be $25.33 a month approximately, or $303 a year. And then for a $600,000 home, it would be $42.65 or $511.80.
Thank you. Are those slides somewhere, or is that just random?
We made a cheat sheet and put it on the dais, and apparently I didn't email that to you, so my apologies.
But because you're on vacation, we didn't give one to you.
It was created at the last minute, I'm so sorry you didn't get a copy, that's my fault.
So do we proceed to vote on this motion, or do we?
The motion failed for lack of a second.
No, I mean, the motion that I made.
Your motion is still on the floor.
Okay.
If there's, are there any other amendments? If not, we will take a vote on the motion.
I would make a, I'm going to make an amendment to the motion to make it a public, to make it actually, to take 2.7 million out of the 10 million.
Which would put it at what?
Which was a bit, would be about...
7.3 million.
Basically, that was my motion.
That was James's motion as well.
Here's a 7.2, I'll say 7.3.
Okay.
That's fine. I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilwoman DCO to amend the motion on the floor to a $7.3 million amount. Okay? And we can...
Do we have any proposals to make up the difference, or do we want to make cuts for the balance?
Well, the difference can be made up in sales tax.
We can do it in, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
I mean, in my mind, I think there's an opportunity to use sales tax that is a lot less burdensome on property owners. I also don't think, I'm even in approval of even my own amendment, but I don't seem to be able to get you guys to go down any further. But, and I'm going to really be, you know, challenging some of, you know, I understand the cause and the ideas of this, but again, I'm going to go back to, people cannot afford these costs, and this is a, this is insanity to me of trying to pass $7 million and having no cuts as part of this discussion. That's the thing that's insanity to me, is we have no cuts as a proposal of anyone in this room.
I thought we were doing some cuts, because we have to, we need $9 million, so...
Not a $10 million levy, we don't need any cuts.
Well, no, 7.3, we will be making cuts.
So as a motion, if we pass the amendment, we have not done that yet, we haven't voted on it, but if we do that, then it would be the remainder in cuts or other ways to make up income, if that makes sense, which is what I talked about originally in terms of making it a single levy for a specified amount of money that we can, we can decide from the cuts or other funds what we're going to do with that.
Yeah, if it passes, as this says, we can figure out the rate and cost and then bring it back for a resolution.
Yes. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, then we have, we will take a...
I'm actually going to withdraw my motion.
Okay, so the motion is withdrawn. We have a, we're back to a $10 million motion. You can redo your seflent.
What's that?
You can redo your seflent. So we're either going to take a vote right now on $10 million bond, excuse me, property tax, or we're going to amend the motion.
I'd like to amend the motion and move to direct staff to bring back a resolution to place a levy that will result in a revenue of six, wait, a motion to withdraw require, I mean, the motion is now on the table, and it was seconded. Sorry, I had to look it up. Okay. So if...
Okay, we...
Once a motion is before the group, permission to withdraw it requires a second and a vote. So we have to vote.
I don't believe that we got a second on, Mr. Brown's motion.
I did.
Okay, okay, you did, all right, so, all right.
So we have to vote if we want to...
We have to vote.
So we have to vote if we are willing to withdraw the motion.
The motion to amend.
The motion to amend.
If we want to withdraw, go back to the 10 million.
Right, so we're just voting for Matt's withdrawal.
We're just voting to withdraw the amendment, okay. Do we need a motion for that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
His request to withdraw sparks your requirement for a vote.
Okay, so then, we're voting on to withdraw the amendment.
Okay.
All right. So all of those in favor withdrawing the amendment, please say yes.
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 Okay, raise your hand, please.
I can't, but I will.
Sorry, you're out, Matt.
I don't see a little yellow hand up there.
Yeah, where's your little yellow hand?
My big hand.
So we have, raise your hands again, please. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, and that leaves two, all right, five to two, so the motion's withdrawn, the amendment, motion to amend is withdrawn, we are back to the original motion, which is for a $10 million.
So we have our committee people from before, would they like to come up and weigh in on this, and can we allow that?
Well, the interesting thing to me, we can, that's up to the council, be consensus of the council to allow that. We have had months of going through this, and that months included a public survey throughout the city, districts, town meetings in districts, pop-ups all over the city, our city manager and others going around and talking to every group possible, and numbers from 300 to 500, I don't know, lots of groups. And then we also asked this committee of volunteers from our community to go through everything as well and come back and make recommendation, and coming back, their recommendation was that we move ahead with the levy at a $9 million level. So...
That wasn't actually their recommendation.
I'm sorry.
Their recommendation was two levies.
Okay.
A 2.7 and a million, and a parks levy at 1.8.
Okay.
And as public sales, sorry, a public safety sales tax at 2.7.
Okay.
So at the end of the day, we are not making the decision to raise the taxes, we are giving the decision to the voters.
Yes.
That's an important thing to remember. They can still say yes or no.
But also, what happens, the voters say no to $10, $9 million, we're now totally, you know, that's...
It will be an interesting adventure.
There are, there are things we can do to increase income, we can also do some councilatic
taxes, it would bring some money in to cover that, and we will do as much of that as we can, and the rest will do in taxes or our cuts and reductions. And then, because if the voters come back to us and say, we're not going to do the property tax, then they're giving it back to us to do the things that we need to do.
Was there an amendment on the floor?
No.
There wasn't, okay. Well, I'd like to make another motion, then, motion. I move to amend the levy to actually be two levies. It'd be a public safety levy at 2.7 million and a parks levy at 1.8 million.
I'll second that.
Okay, can you repeat, can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, I'm going to move to change the levy amount from 10 million and make it to levies, which is a public safety levy at 2.7 million and a parks levy at 1.8 million. And the reason for that is twofold. One, is that we entrusted seven individuals to do a committee that were from vastly different perspectives and districts and understandings and where they were at, and they came up with these recommendations, and we have not even, really even brought these recommendations to the floor as a, as an aspect. And I actually think it's a much more responsible approach to this versus trying to get it all in one fell swoop. I will say this, my fear with also trying to pass a nine or 10 or 12, however many million levy, is that if you fail, you have now failed on the entire kitten caboodle, and you're talking about literally having to do 9 million worth of cuts versus, let's say you have a parks levy that passes at 1.8 million or a public safety levy that passes, which public safety levies tend to pass in this community, that those two things passing, you're not cannibalizing everything down to that. And again, it goes back to, you know, still having the sales tax option on the table, and then also cuts. I still believe we need to do cuts, and that was also part of their recommendations.
Okay, so we had a motion to amend by Deputy Mayor Brown to place it into two levies, 4.5 million for public, I'm sorry, 2.7 for public safety and 1.8 for parks, and a second by Councilwoman DCO. Any further discussion of the motion? I hesitate to agree with this for a couple of reasons, and that's just me. One is that if we're asking for a levy, now we're asking for two levies, and I think it's, it can prioritize things for people, it can also split people, because it's going to be much easier to get a public safety levy than it is to get a parks levy. because it's gonna be much easier to get a public safety levy than it is to get a parks levy. That's just, that's just a matter of the fact. And so many times when it's come to funding, our Parks and Rec Department has been the one that's paid a huge price, you know, in the end, in a lot of ways. So that's one perspective, it's just mine, but that's one thing I think about.
Well, I do know on the survey, parks was very popular...
Yes.
With people who took the survey.
Right.
Surprisingly high on the list. So...
I would feel more comfortable personally just doing a single levy and when it comes to making cuts than asking the public to give us, I'm doing none. But, that's just me, I'm just saying. So are there any other comments on, on the motion to amend?
I think I agree with you, putting every, you know, putting one levy on the ballot is a way to tell the voters, this is a solution, and if you guys want it, fine. I understand the argument for having two and, and reducing the risk, but, you know, you can argue both sides of that question.
Right.
I'm gonna play devil's advocate here, is if, if it fails at 9 million and you can't convince voters, if, if the public is not convinced on the, on the ask or the need, especially if we're not cutting anything at $10 million, it, the likelihood of that failing and then having zero, I would imagine, is probably a lot higher, especially if we're not cutting anything. That would be my, that would be my non-expert opinion, but expert opinion on other things. That it would not, it would not pass.
I would say to that myself, I agree that 10 million is too high. I think that we do need to realistically look at cuts. I need, we, I think we need to incorporate that. So if this motion doesn't pass, I will either entertain or make a motion for a single levy at a lesser amount that would include some cuts. Any other comments? Then we will take a vote on the amendment to the original motion. All of those in favor of making two separate levies, and one for public safety at 2.7 and one for parks at 1.8, which would take our $9 million and cut it in half, please indicate by raising your hand. Are you raising your hand, Mr. Brown? Did I see that? Okay, so that's two. All of those who are not in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four.
Are you voting over there?
I'm staying neutral.
We need to vote.
Can't sit on the...
You know what, I think, I'm still thinking on this, but I think I'll go with the, I'll go with Matt, Patricia on this one.
Janice.
Janice, sorry, Janice, my, my bad.
One, two, three, four. That's five to two vote.
Yeah.
So the motion to amend does not carry.
It's three to four.
Three to four.
Five to two?
Four to three.
Four to three.
Four to three.
It's Janice, me and Leo.
Okay, Leo, okay, I thought you said Patricia.
I'm sorry, I meant Janice.
You confused me.
I was thinking so hard on this.
And, and the amendment does not carry, so we're back to the original motion. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion. I don't like to do this all by myself, but I will. I'm going to make a motion to amend the original motion to a single levy for 7 point...
We've already 7.2 and 7.3 didn't go.
I know, well, I'm working on it. So... A $7 million levy that would leave $10 million in funding of cuts.
Okay, I second that.
Thank you. I don't know how much more I can talk about it, so I'm just gonna let other people talk about it.
I think we've all talked about it.
How much was it? Sorry, I missed that part.
$7 million total.
Deputy Mayor, did you ever get that cheat sheet? Maybe this will help.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, so that would be, yeah, somewhere between, it's about 60 cents, just about 60 cents.
About 58 cents, yeah, probably.
Well, I mean, yeah, 68 cents, 50 cents, yeah, but well, it goes up by five, five dollar increments, so five, yeah, it'd be five. 60, 60, about 60 cents.
That's all I care about.
Per month, on the average home, 1788, and on the $600,000 home, $30.10. Is that right, Mr. Warren? Okay, thank you.
That's for the 7.2.
That's, yeah, so it's not quite, not quite that one.
It would be a little lower because we're saying seven, so, yeah, a little lower than that. Can Deputy Mayor Brown?
Okay.
Okay.
We're sending you the cheat sheet.
That'd be great.
Okay. So there's a, a motion and a second to amend. Anybody else have any comments? If not, we'll take a vote.
Somehow the online livestream has been turned, turned off.
What?
I'm sorry, what is that, Deputy Mayor Brown, what?
Um, someone, there's, there's people saying they're watching and it's, the online livestream has been turned off. That's all I'm wondering.
It's because we're over time, we're taking too long.
Mike, is there an issue? Mike, is there an issue? No, he says no.
I think not an issue.
Okay, all right, just making sure.
Maybe, maybe it's their reception.
Can anybody confirm?
Maybe there was a blackout.
The world's coming to an end.
Yes. Okay, if there's no further...
What's the motion on the floor?
A single levy of 7.1 million.
Seven.
7.0.
7.0 million.
7 million, okay.
All right, then we will take a vote. All of those in favor to amend the motion to $7 million, raise your hand. All of those opposed to raising it, or to changing it to $7 million, raise your hand. One, two, three.
Did we get Matt?
No, I'm waiting for your hand.
There it is, there's his hand, he's raising it.
Right, so the amendment to, to change the, on the, on the levy to $7 million did not pass, it failed. So we're back to the original motion of $10 million.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. You know, I'm gonna amend to that motion, I, I think I'd go, I would just kinda cut it more towards the 50 percent, to the, it's more like the six, you know? It's a, it's more toward halfway and not the full amount.
So the 6,043.
Yep.
I think there's also the argument that a lot of people are looking at what we're doing and saying, "Okay, if we solve the problem, I'll invest in Yakima. If we just kick the can down the road, I'll think twice."
We're trying not to kick the can down the road.
No.
So you, you...
Yeah, I, the, the six, five, I want, the deal is, I want, I don't want to put all of it on to the property taxes of what we have to come up with. And so, I'm looking at the numbers, I'm looking at, you know, $14, $14 a month increase for an average home at 356. I think, I think that's a little more doable than, you know, getting up to the 17 or the $19 mark, you know? Trying to, to equivalent to those people that are below that, that have owned properties, they're like, you know, they're already on the edge, and so, and I still think we should come up with some cuts on our own, so...
So the rest would be cuts and...
It'd be cuts or any type of revenue building we could do.
I'll make sure to second that, because I think, I don't think there was a second for six.
I don't think there's a motion.
There's no motion.
I made a motion.
You're making a motion to amend to...
Yeah.
The 6,000...
$6,043, or 6,430,000.
That's not gonna do anything for... The 50 cents per thousand.
Yeah, about the, yeah, 50 cents.
Did you second?
I did.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Roy and a second by Councilman Herrera to amend the original motion to a 50 cent levy increase, which would be just over $6 million.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion?
No.
I'm, I'm, I'm struggling, still not convinced, but I will say that, that, that would put us $3 million, about $3 million less. We can do a, a sales tax to add to that. We can also do cuts, we can also increase fees. So there's a possibility of moving forward to, to capture the whole amount in a given resource.
That's what I, I was thinking on my paperwork.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote. All of those in favor to amend the original motion to this, which is 50 cents on the levy increase and which would be a little worth $6 million, please raise your hand. One, two, three.
No.
Four. So we have a four, three vote. We have an amendment to the motion.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move to postpone the motion indefinitely.
Second.
It's not debatable, you have to take it for a vote.
Okay, you moved to, to, okay, and we got a second? We need to vote on it then?
Yep, so in other words, you're gonna call a question on the amendment. Because now the motion will stand, we carried the motion, carried, yep. So the, now the motion on the floor will be for a levy for $6 million.
This is to postpone it indefinitely.
We have to vote on that.
This is the motion to postpone indefinitely. It's a Roberts rule, it's, it's allowed.
Thank you, excuse us, we're looking at, can you tell me, sir, if that's correct?
So debate, which, okay. So the effect... I'm gonna give you the breakdown according to Google AI.
She's gonna postpone her answer indefinitely.
I am not. So this is a motion that can be made in relation to the main motion, it requires a second. It can be debated, it needs a majority vote to pass. Debate, debate can include discussion of the main motion, which is different than normal debate. And I think unless you have other questions about it, that's basically the procedural...
So we can vote on this?
Yes, you do vote on it, it requires a majority vote, you can have a discussion if you want.
Okay, so we have a motion to indefinitely postpone a decision?
It's just indefinitely postpone the motion. So it's different from tabling because it doesn't have a specific time for it to come back.
All right, so we have a motion to indefinitely postpone the motion we have on the floor right now.
Which specifically is a motion to have the $10 million levy, is the motion on the table that...
No, no, the amendment passed.
Oh, so, you're right, so the motion on the table...
Is for $6 million.
Is for the $6 million.
Okay.
Hold on, indefinitely to kick the can down the road.
It's dead for this session, doesn't mean it's dead for the next meeting. That's what it means.
So why, why are we waiting another week?
I think, I think there's a lot of options, and I think, you know, we're gonna keep going back and nickel and diming from 5 million to 4 million to 6 million to 10 million.
We're having discussion, right now we're waiting for a second or not, because otherwise we're...
We already had a second.
We already had a second, okay, I didn't see it. So we have a motion then to indefinitely postpone this decision and a, a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman Burke. Any discussion?
I mean, we've had plenty of time to think about options.
I was trying to have discussion.
Yeah.
On my motion.
I think there's a timeliness issue that we're looking at, and there's deadlines coming up, and it's not wise to wait.
Yeah, we have, we have meetings all through July and we can call a special meeting. It's not the end of the world.
Is anyone who feels like they are gonna definitely be, by a sway to change their direction by indefinitely postponing?
No, I mean, I mean, it's still...
It's not just a matter of time, it's just a matter of, are we, are we reaching a decision, is the point.
Well, this is a hard decision for anybody to make right now. It's still, even coming up with 6 million, so I don't, I'm still against property taxes altogether, so...
But it's not gonna change in two weeks.
I don't know if it'll change in two weeks.
Okay, well, I need that one person talking at a time, please.
Just 'cause it's, and it's something, we come in two more weeks, this is really important. I think we should put most our time into trying to figure out the, the right numbers, not, like Matt said. And I, I'd have to agree with him on that, we're just, we're kiddy counting numbers around right now. I mean, I still think...
Nine o'clock.
Yeah, it's nine o'clock, and I, I, if we could wait a couple more weeks and have a final decision, I'm, I'm, I'm up for it. Because I want, I want all of us, when this happens, I want us all to be on board with this, so we gotta find something.
You may not ever all...
Be on board, at least a, a good majority, and I'm, I'm still, I threw the 6 million out there because it makes sense, but I still, I'm still against property taxes. But, you know, Matt put that out, I wanna hear all you guys speak. I still am, still on the edge of my decision-making. I'd like to have another week to think about it, too, so, yeah, I would be, I'd be in favor of tabling it for the next couple of meetings.
I think that our city manager and our budget director are in a very difficult situation already of having to make adjustments if we don't pass something and if it doesn't get approved. So then this increases the pressure on them if we postpone this decision.
But here's, here's the other thought aspect, is if we postpone...
Before you speak, again, Mr. Brown, I'm gonna give other council opportunity to, to respond to this.
Mr. Burke? I guess so, it's my, it's my motion, though, that's all I was asking.
I, I know.
I didn't get a chance to speak to my motion.
I think you did, but that's okay, go ahead, Mr. Burke.
I think the most fair across the board would be a 3.6 levy, the sales tax for 2.7, cut the rest. Because that'd be a third, a third, a third, essentially.
But the discussion right now is whether or not to indefinitely postpone a decision.
Let, let him speak, but that's what I was thinking.
Okay.
I just wanted to get that out there.
You propose that?
I'm not gonna propose it. You can propose it.
I'm actually, I'm ready to move forward, to think that in a week of, of time and discussion, it's gonna change any of our positions a great deal. I'm not convinced that it is, it probably won't change a great deal for me. I think we have to trust ourselves as a council and then trust the people, whatever they give back to us. I'm just ready to move forward. Having said that, Mr. Brown, go ahead.
So I, I think if there's a $6 million question on the floor that's postponed one week, that you're going to hear from the public, much like I heard from the public about fireworks and killed it the week later, I'm just going to tell you, is that the public will hear these things and then they will give us a strong, "Yeah, okay," or "No." And I think that does sway opinions. We've seen this in council meetings in years past where things change on the whim from one week to the next. All of a sudden, council members who are voting for one thing are voting against that thing the next week because they've changed their minds. So I say that because that, that is the, the, the natural flow of things. And I think having one more week is not going to hurt anything. We have until August 5th to get this out. A resolution does not take us 30 days to put together. I'm sure Sarah can probably whip something out in about a week, maybe three days. She might already have it. She has Google AI right there, it might even happen right away, so...
This is a question of ours outside council to review, so...
It does, okay.
Anyways, needless to say, I think we can get something done fast, but I do think postponing it a week is, 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 is not the end of the world.
Well, I...
We have a meeting next week.
Thank you.
I think that, you know, surveying a handful of people that say no, you know, is not taking the vote to the people. This is what it's all about, this is about taking the vote to the people. And if you're just walking down the street and talking to people, that does not represent the entire city. So I don't think that's valid.
Well, but that's how other decisions have been made in the past, so that's why I'm...
Not this big of a decision.
Well, I'm just saying.
Sarah, would you address that issue, please? You, you said something and I didn't quite hear.
Sure, so just as a reminder, the motion is to direct staff to bring back the actual resolution, so this would not be the day that you are making your final decision on what to put on the ballot. So I know that there were a lot of motions, so I just wanted to put that back out there as a reminder because this involves levy work and tax work. There's something that we usually have our outside counsel who works on bonds and tax issues review. So although I probably can get it done relatively quickly, we want to just be able to recognize that it does require an additional level of review to make sure that it's accurate with regards to the state statutes and laws regarding levy requests on the ballot. So we wanna make sure that we give time for that. Now, I'm not saying it's going to take a month, but it is not quite as fast as you might normally see out of the legal department because we have to consult someone else.
I did have a comment, Madam Mayor. This just brings up the conversation I had with Mr. Warner on Monday about the 2019 levy proposal. You said that the council back then kinda gave their perspective at the meeting, which kinda swayed the public already, but... their perspective at the meeting, which kind of swayed the public already. But we want to make sure that, I think, we want to be confident on what we're going to decide to motion to have the vote next week. So I think, I feel like confident enough to move on to make that motion or say yes to that motion as well, so.
This evening?
Yeah, or.
This evening or next week?
Yeah. Yeah, next week. Yeah, make the motion to pass.
Next week, yeah. Take a week, make decision.
Okay. So the motion is to postpone this vote indefinitely. And it was seconded on the motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, then we take a vote. All of those in favor of the motion to postpone indefinitely the decision on the levy, please raise your hand. Three. All of those ready to vote tonight, raise your hand. Four. So we have a four-three vote on moving ahead with banking decision this evening.
Well, didn't we already pass that?
And we had, we had the amendment on the motion for $6 million. Okay, and then so, so the amended motion before us, because we passed the amendment, is to have on the ballot in August.
It's to direct staff to bring back a resolution.
Thank you, yeah, to direct staff to bring back a resolution to place a levy on the November 2025 ballot that will result in a revenue of $6 million.
I think the motion was for a single levy of 50 cents for $1,000. So it might not be exactly $6 million. I don't know.
So we can rephrase that to then? Yeah. So we'll just say it at any amount of 50 cents on the $1,000. And then it'll come out to what it is, which is a little over $6 million. And that's.
That's done already. We voted on that.
We already, we already passed that.
It's not, it's not passed. The amendment's passed.
The amendment is passed. So that's the amendment that we're voting on now.
No. So what happened was is that the council, it was moved to amend to a single levy for 50 cents for $1,000. And that motion was to amend Councilmember Glenn's original motion. So the motion in front of the council right now is the motion to approve directing staff for the 50 cents on the $1,000 resolution to come back to council at a council meeting. So that is the motion that's on the table for you to vote for.
I thought we already voted on it.
So you voted to amend Councilmember Glenn.
The motion on the floor is actually the amended motion at this point.
Okay.
We'll lose track if we don't decide.
Okay. So then the motion is to move to direct staff to bring back a resolution to place on a levy on the November 2020 ballot that will result in a 50 cents per 1,000 levy.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that need seconded or?
Nope. That's our, that's our motion because the original motion was seconded. We're just amending.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
How many council members can afford the increase?
I just don't.
Two.
I just don't go to Starbucks quite as often.
Great. So two council members out of seven can afford a tax increase that we're hoping that the people of Yakima can afford. Sounds good.
Okay, thank you for the sarcasm, Mr. Brown. I will say this. I think that there's something that people need to consider as well, and that's called discretionary income. And I have worked with families for years on budgeting issues. And there are things that are considered, taxes are not discretionary, but if you are deciding what you're going to do with your money, there are things that are discretionary. Buying Starbucks, getting my nails done. That's a choice I make.
And I would rather have a funded police force than, than extra calories every weekend.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
I think, I think the issue, though, Mayor, is when you lose discretionary income, you lose sales taxes, which is a bigger issue. So just FYI.
That's why we do.
That's why, that's one of the reasons why we're looking at doing the levies to make sure we maintain a high enough level of service and then working to make the adjustments we can to serve everyone in our city the very best we can.
So we can do economic development.
Councilman Burke?
I've said my piece.
You don't look like you have.
I know.
Keep coming back to economic development, but the businesses will not want to come here if the property taxes are too high.
But they're not too high.
We guess we'll find out.
We'll find out.
Yeah, we will.
Well, we need to ask the voters that. We need to ask the voters if they're willing to support that. Because they won't come if we don't have any quality of life issues or enough police force either, so.
And I'm retired on a, on a fixed income, and I don't have a problem with this.
That's your personal life. Other people aren't as fortunate as you.
I know. There's other people that are. There's other people that are way more fortunate too.
Ian, whatever, let's take it to a vote.
Well, I just think that we need to give it to the people to vote. That's the whole point.
But the deal is if this whole thing fails, then we're really, that's all we have. We got a problem instead of, like initially was the Matt with the breaking it up into smaller levies. That really doesn't affect the, the property owner so much, but affects more of everybody. And more chances that pass and then, you know, a big tax levy that we're, hopefully the voters will pass. And I understand the, what Matt's trying to say on that. And that's, that's, that's a good question to have. And so.
I think, I think there's a point of diminishing returns that we're not actually understanding is the higher the property tax, the lower money that other people have to spend on sales taxes, which then decreases the sales tax, which then balloons the deficit issue that we have as, as the sales taxes are number one source of income as a, as a city. And as that thing goes down and dries up because we've increased property taxes, because businesses have moved out, homeowners are tired of it, they move, different things like that happen. This is a, this is where sales tax actually plays a better part of balancing this three-legged stool. Because if we actually use sales tax by doing a public safety levy or a public safety sales tax and a less of a property tax levy, you're, it's a, it's a, in my opinion, more of a happy medium that doesn't cannibalize both at the same time.
Well, we already are losing in sales tax, and that's a reality.
Right. And then so do we want to, or in sales tax is my point.
All right. So we're not, we're not looking at 10 million or 9 million. We're talking about 6 million at this point, which is not going to give us everything we need. And then we're talking about what we can do to make up the rest of that need, the other 3, $4 million, right? We can do a, a sales tax increase. You know, there are things we can do. We can increase our fees. I mean, there's, we have a roster of things we can do. There are services that we can cut that are not essential, that aren't necessarily, they aren't public safety. They aren't fully quality of life. There are just some, some things that we can cut. We had a list, we've given a list of those earlier in terms of what they may be. So I think we need to consider all of those things.
Yeah.
Like, for example, fireworks, you know.
There's a lot of low hanging fruit.
A lot of low hanging fruit that we can, that we can do right away. And we can look at increasing fees right away, you know, to make them equitable across the board for what other cities are doing and what we can do and higher fees for the county than we have for the city in terms of use of services. So there are some things we can do right away that will assist us in making those, in those cuts.
I think the other aspect too, though, to consider is that when we put property tax levies on a ballot, you're asking voters to vote on something and, and it's not necessarily property owners. So you have people voting on something that are not property owners.
But they live somewhere and they'll be, and they'll be, they'll, they'll get a raise in their rent.
Yeah, but now that is capped as well. So I'm, I'm just bringing up the point here is we're asking people to tax people that are not even going to really feel the tax. The ones who get to vote won't also, won't get to feel the entire ramifications of it. It'll be the property owners that'll again feel the burden of the tax increase more so than others.
Any other discussion?
All is done.
I think if we make a decision on this tonight, then the city manager and our treasury man will know how to proceed to finish up the rest of the reconciliation of the budget.
Well, we'll have more work to do.
Yes, we will. We'll all have more work to do.
Well, this is just crafting a resolution. This is, we're still not.
Right. Yeah, we're not, we're only voting to get a resolution made.
We're just directing staff to come up with something that, you know. Yeah.
So again, we need to take a final vote on the resolution that's, or excuse me, the motion that's on the floor. We had first and second, we've had discussion. Does anyone want to review the motion?
Say that again?
The review of the motion.
Review of the motion.
It's directing staff.
Yeah. The motion is direct staff to bring back a resolution to place a levy on the November 2025 ballot that will result in a revenue of 50 cents per $1,000. Any further comment? Then let's take a vote. All of those who support the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. Four, okay. Those that oppose, raise your hand. Three. So the motion passes four-three. Counsel, this has been a challenging night. You know, we, we, I think we all, what we want is the very best thing we can do for our city. We all want that. We just have different ideas on how to do it. So now we've made a decision. And now we're going to, we're going to give it to the voters and we're going to ask you.
Well, actually.
No.
You have made the decision to have this come back in resolution form. The final decision as to whether it goes to the voters will be at a subsequent council meeting.
Sorry.
I know it's confusing, but I just, I know people are watching, so I want to make sure that people are clear that the final decision.
Staff will bring us back a draft of what it will be. And as long as we're in agreement, then we will move forward.
I think it's important for the public to realize from the sake of who can actually afford this levy or not, I think the math and the, and what it actually entails is very evident throughout this course of this meeting. And I hope the public can actually see that, is that there are those that are trying to make this more not so tax burden on the property owners and those that are not. So, thank you.
Thank you. But I also want the public to recognize again.
It's in their, it's in their hands.
Yeah, it, it ultimately will be in their hands. And that, you know, we as a council, all of us, whether we agree on this vote or not, have the, want to have the best interest of the city in mind. Each of us with a different mindset. So it's been very challenging to the council. It'll be challenging to the public when the vote comes to you. And we will faithfully abide by the answer that you give us. No more, have more work to do. Is there anything else? Any other business?
Oh, 9C.
C.
I'm sorry.
I have something. Oh.
I have something too.
Okay, so city manager update. Are you giving an update?
I, I do have one, but Craig has to do the item C, the ordinance, with the adjustments to the budget.
Okay.
It's quick.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I will be really fast, I promise. There is 13,929,992 dollars and 82 cents worth of budget amendments. Seven, just under 7.5 million are grants, so they're money in, money out. And all of the others, for the most part, are, are where we're going to start spending capital reserves in some of our enterprise funds or our capital funds. There, there's some, for example, there was a refuse truck that is going to be $463,762 that, it was ordered in 2023. So we have to now, because we're going to get that truck in 2025, we have to amend the budget today. It just takes that long to get some of the equipment. So there's a list of those, those, those changes there. And I believe that was in the council's packet, so you could look through the detail. And I would be happy to answer any questions if council has any, any questions on any of them.
Questions, counsel?
Do we need to vote on this today or is this, we're not voting on this, are we?
It's an ordinance that we, that we are, will be passing today or not passing today. Yeah, 9C.
It's the budget amendment. We typically would do this in consent. We're trying to be very transparent and explain the changes that we make to the public so everyone sees where all the money is going all the time.
So do you need a motion?
Do we need to vote on that tonight?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
This is the first reading, so there's.
Oh, there is not, not just frustrating.
It's just a reading. I'm so sorry.
Okay. Thank you for recognizing that. Thank you, Mr. Warner. Counsel, have any questions, Mr. Warner, before we go? Okay?
May I read the title?
Yes, you may, please. Thank you.
This is the first reading of an ordinance amending the 2025 through 2026 biennial budget for the city of Yakima and making appropriations from unappropriated fund balances within various funds for expenditure during 2025 through 2026 for various purposes.
Thank you, clerk. Appreciate that. Now we're at item 10, city manager.
Yes. So I will talk very quickly. I'm going to take my comments and make them a lot shorter. I just wanted you all to know that I reached out to Pacific Power because of the West Valley power outages that we had been hearing about. I think you're all nodding your heads. I definitely had heard about it too. So I was lucky. I, I sent an email over Sunday. Turns out their president was in town, so I had a meeting with them yesterday. The leadership team of Pacific Power came by and they gave me some information about what's going on with that. So the West Valley area, specifically around Summit View, between 52nd to 88th, has experienced several enhanced safety setting related outages in June, including two underground faults, two avian contacts, and a blown transformer. So I'm going to not read this whole thing, but it, it talks about how those enhanced save, settings are intended to prevent wildfires. And there's, I think we, we've heard about that. What the response is, is what I want to read. So interruptions are monitored and sent for engineering review. For this area, review was completed and today, Pacific Power installed a device that will protect the area of concern, allowing most of the circuit to be in normal operation and off of the sensitive enhanced safety settings. This device will limit the number of customers impacted by an enhanced safety setting outage by isolating a smaller section of line. Pacific Power has been in direct contact with city manager, as well as Nob Hill Water to ensure critical infrastructure locations have been identified and considered for this device placement. Improvement to the outages should be noticed immediately.
Thank you.
You bet. That's it.
That's it? All right. Then we move on to item 11, which is other business.
Can I have something? The National Health, it's National Health Center Week next month, and I have a request for a proclamation for that. So I need to have that put on the next agenda. Is that right? I mean, that's right?
What was it?
It's a proclamation for National Health Center Week, which is August 3 through 9.
I second it.
So we have motion, a second to put on the agenda for August 9th to review a proclamation for.
We need it before then. Yeah, yeah.
Well, for next week, right? To, to then review the proclamation for National Health Center Week. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Who else has other business?
I do.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Brown.
So I would, so I would like to direct staff to approach entities that could be part of a regional fire authority or fire district and prepare financial information about the operational costs and available funding streams.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and seconded by Councilman Burke to have staff review all of the financial implications of forming a fire district in District 5. Would that be correct? Or as a whole?
There's a specific language. I'll, I'll send it to.
Okay, thank you. So that's for a future agenda. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just for clarity, Mayor, it's not necessarily for, it's not for a future agenda. They're directing staff to approach entities so we can start the discussion.
Okay. So you're just looking for information?
It's just, we have to kick the process off to get going.
I understand. My question is, you're asking for that information. You're not asking for a, a future vote. Is that correct?
Right. I'm not, I'm not asking for us to sit and study a, a fire authority again. I'm asking the staff to go out and start having those discussions about a regional fire authority or fire district and prepare the financial information about the operational costs and available funding streams.
Et cetera. So information. Thank you. So I need to know. Are there any other business for this evening?
But that needs a second and a, and a vote. Okay. We still need to vote on it.
So, so all those in favor of the staff providing the information that Deputy Mayor Brown asked for, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Aye. Any opposed?
I think I am. From the information I've heard, it's, it's kind of a dead end thing. And ultimately, it raises taxes.
Well, we are not up for discussion. We're just up to have.
I'm just a name. That's all.
Okay. And the motion passed.
Raising taxes.
Okay. Is there any other business by council this evening? If not, have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn to the next council study session on July 8th, 2025 at 5:00 PM in the City Hall Council Chambers.
Second.
So we have a motion by, by Councilman, Councilman D'Esio and a second by Councilman Burke to adjourn to the next city council study session, July 8th, 2025, 5:00 PM here at City Hall. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Okay.